... them personally.
Right.
That's really all it comes down to. You know, if it's in your backyard, they show up. Coincidentally, Valby plans on showing up with people. We can talk another time about the discussion, but he is, he is really cool. I feel davened completely already.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Welcome to our Saturday gathering. Hi, everybody.
Drop the camel.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna get started, so we can let our friends that have joined us from PSNH this morning. And we're going to kind of review the last storm and kind of what's been occurring for the last four or five years with the long outages that we've all been kind of going through. So at this time, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll get the meeting started. So if you'd all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you'd all, I guess we'll go a little bit from protocol.
It's a Saturday morning.
It is. Okay. So Dave, why don't you get us started?
Sure. Thanks. Good morning. The council suggested we have this workshop this morning to take a look at the most recent disaster and how we can all work together to better prepare for the next one. We're talking about the event which started on Saturday, October 29th, in which an early winter storm dropped about eight to 10 inches of heavy wet snow on trees with leaves. And that snow took down tree limbs, power lines, and entire trees across the entire state. At one point in Londonderry, we had about 90% of the town without power. The town was fortunate in that compared to other disasters, we had fewer roads which were blocked, so most of the roads were open within relatively short time. And our main, our main challenge was assisting PSNH to restore power in the community. Once again, our shelter was operational thanks to the generator which was funded through a state grant and through, through support of town, town meeting voters three or four years ago. And the Alert Team, which is a local organization which assists our police and fire in town, was very instrumental in managing and operating the shelter for all but one day, which is open, the Red Cross actually assumed management for the final day. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Alert Team for their dedication and commitment to the community. Chief McCaffrey is here today. He is our emergency management director. He was responsible for directing efforts to return all services to be the liaison of public service. He also coordinated with our State Emergency Operations Center, which is located in Concord. And I believe that the power was restored, I believe within, all power was restored, I think, within seven days. So at this point, Mr. Chair suggests that we recognize Elizabeth LaRocca from Public Service, who has brought a team with her to explain public service's response and other factors which they have to work with during these events.
Thanks, Dave. Elizabeth, would you like to step up to the podium? Thank you. On behalf of the council, I am very thankful for you guys as invited guests to come out this morning and basically allow us this forum to try to work with you and to try to find a better resolution going forward so that we don't end up in this kind of mess.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. And good morning, everyone. And what we'll do is we'll go through a slide presentation. It's about 12 slides, I do believe. And we do have reports that are available for people if they would like more detail. Today, we're here to talk about the snowstorm of October, but we also brought the Hurricane Irene report that was generated. What I'd like to do before we get started, though, is to introduce the people who have joined me. My name is Elizabeth LaRocca. I serve as Community Relation Manager for PSNH's Southern Division. With me on my left is Mark Sandler, the Southern Division Manager. Over here, actually, is Mike Skelton. Mike Skelton is with our Corporate Communication Department, and he's a media spokesperson for PSNH. Jay Yurgo, Jay, would you raise your hand, please? Jay's our Line Department Supervisor based in our Dairy Area Work Center. Serves most of Londonderry. Bob Allen, would you raise your hand, please? Bob is our Vegetation Management Supervisor. And then Doug Frazier, Doug. Doug is our Supervisor of Line Department out of Hookset. And that, he serves the north part of Londonderry. Mark? All right, just a brief overview of public service. PSNH is one of four electric utility companies operating in New Hampshire. We're regulated by the state, New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission. We serve about 500,000 customers in 211 communities. That translates into about 75% of New Hampshire's population. Territory, 5,600 square miles approximately. We operate with three operating divisions: seacoast northern, southern, this is where Londonderry is located, and approximately 240,000 PSNH customers. So that's the densely populated division. And then finally, we have western central. And this is just a pictorial of the same information. Where we are located is the blue. And each division has their own division manager, an operations manager that basically supervises the line departments. We have about 15 to 18 line department locations across the state. We have a Community Relation Manager. We have a Field Engineering Group. We have arborists that report to Bob Allen. And during emergencies, you know, we've realized now with the magnitude of these storms, it isn't just about restoring power anymore. We must communicate simultaneously to power restoration. And we have to communicate with municipal officials so they can operate their communities. And we also have to communicate with the legislators and the other state officials. So what happened in Londonderry, it is not lost on public service, that Londonderry, last I knew, I live here, I do live in Londonderry, is the eighth largest New Hampshire community. Our population is about 24,000. We in public service has 10,300 customers in Londonderry. Most of them are served by Dairy, 8,000. 2,300 are served by Hookset. That's the north Londonderry. We have a number of circuits in Londonderry, but we've got four major circuits. And they basically operate like a quadrant. We've got one that serves north Londonderry, that's out of Hookset's area. We have the southern part. The southern quadrant is basically at the crossroads, and it goes along one, I guess you could say 128, down, it's like a triangular part of the state and it goes down to, or the town, excuse me, and it goes down to Hudson. The west, which goes from the middle of Londonderry over towards Hudson on 102. The other part from the center goes towards Dairy. We have five, we have major substations that serve Londonderry. They're from Manchester, they're from Dairy, Bedford, Hudson, and Londonderry. And we just can't get into specifics about locations, where they are, roads, because we live in a different world. And we also have a significant amount of automation on the circuits, the backbones, that allow us to do things, again, through automation, so you don't have to have a switchman in the field doing switching on and off based on what you need to do.
Can we ask a question? John? With regards to these circuits, it appears from what many of us have learned is, is that these circuits are daisy-chained throughout the communities. Why is it that we have so few circuits? From what I understand from the, from the storm is, a circuit would go down and 5,000 people would go down. Why would we, you know, is that normal?
I would say that that's pretty normal statewide.
So is that normal in the industry?
Yes.
Okay, so when-
That might even be small in the industry.
Okay. So one circuit goes down, now what, what, why would a circuit go down? Okay? Just-
Well-
You know, all of a sudden, power goes off.
Right.
Okay, we're all laymen. This is what you do every day.
Yes.
Okay? Circuit goes down, all 5,000 people go out. Why?
A tree could come down across the three phases and take the whole circuit out. It just has to touch the three phases and-
Could you, what's the three phases?
Running, your backbone circuits generally are three-phase circuits. Three, three lines across the top of the poles. There's a roadside circuit, there's a center line, and then there's, there's the field side line. If a tree comes down and touches those three lines at one time, if the autumn, if it lays on there, you're gonna get a trip, re-close, trip, re-close, trip. What that means is, the power is automatically, in your case, is automatically gonna try to come back on, but it sees that there's still an issue. It tries again. It sees there's an issue. It might try the third time, sees there's an issue, and then the line's dead. Then somebody has to come out and remove that tree from those lines. If there's no other damage to any other equipment, it could be an easy fix. If that tree came down and virtually took those lines to the ground, that would be a totally different story.
Okay. Everybody understand that? Thank you.
And tree trimming is always of interest to people. And of course, we're a heavily tree state. Public service's annual budget right now is $14 million for tree trimming, and that also means tree removal. It was $6 million in 2003. So we've been up, we've been increasing that. Bob could tell you in more detail, but we've been increasing it. It almost seems annually to me. We have six full-time arborists that report to Bob, and we contract with 100 asp land tree crews. And they're the people that actually remove the trees or trim the trees. We have approximately 13,000 miles of line in New Hampshire that we maintain on a four-to-five-year cycle. We try to do 20% a year. The thing that we'd like to let you know is that in Londonderry, we actually are on a four-year cycle. Why that is, I don't know, but Bob could elaborate. And tells me we must have a lot of trees. But Bob's got, we use a national standard in terms of what we do to keep trees away. And you've, I think everybody's got the information that Dave had up front, but we show you pictorially that we have these clearances of eight feet on the sides, 10 feet below, 15 feet above. To me, it makes more sense if you look at the picture. But we, in addition to doing this five-year, four-year, five-year cycle of the main drags, or main circuits, we also will do enhanced tree trimming. If we've got a problem and a town comes up to us and goes, "Look, this is really bad. You need to do something." Bob's got some flexibility budget, and he'll come in and remove from the ground to the sky. And we also will do mid-cycle trimming. Again, Bob can elaborate on that if, 'cause I don't really understand what that means. I guess that means we can come in and do something that wasn't planned in the middle of a cycle, because it's become, become noticed and a problem. And then finally, we will remove hazard trees that are brought to our attention. We might see them, arborists might see them, the town might tell us. We get road agents that come to us and tell us this. Now, these are on the main backbones. We can't go into every neighborhood across the state of New Hampshire. But in any event, we, we feel that's like, I think it's, comes to 160 trees a week, but-
So let me ask another question about trees.
Yes.
In my time on the planning board, PSNH has been in twice to ask for permission to remove trees on Adams Road, which is a scenic byway. Is that a major circuit that that road is on?
Jay, is that a question you can answer, or Bob? And you'll need to move up here, Jay.
Adams Road in Londonderry is kind of our express feed out to the west part of Londonderry toward Litchfield. So, you know, it's awfully difficult, being the restrictions there are on scenic roads, to make sure that we maintain that eight-foot, 15-foot, 10-foot cleared area, you know, around the wires.
So every time we have a storm, even minor in nature, trees go down on Adams Road, and Adams Road floods, and power goes out. So take away the fact that it's a scenic byway, and it's the only scenic byway in town. What would your recommendation be?
If I can speak to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. It is a scenic road, and it is the-
You, you are?
I'm Bob Allen. I'm the Supervisor of Vegetation Management for PSNH. Adams Road is the only scenic byway in, in Londonderry that I'm aware of. And we are, we do have restrictions on scenic roads. As you know, the planning board has to meet and give us a permit to work on those roads if we want to take trees down on a scenic road. Oftentimes, it requires a site visit with the planning board and a public comment section. So roads are denoted as scenic by the town, and the reason being that there's usually a tree canopy or a, a nice geographic reason to keep it scenic. So we understand that, and we try to work with the towns on that. But it sometimes is difficult to get trees down, not just in Londonderry, or not even in Londonderry, in all towns with scenic roads. It's, it's a little harder to get trees down on those roads.
So, for example, if, you know, if this town council came to a consensus that they would like PSNH to work with the planning board to find out what the best recommendations are going forward for the management of Adams Road so that power restoration can be significantly lower than what it is now, would that be something that PSNH would entertain doing?
Absolutely. We'd love to meet with you on that.
So what do you think, Sean? Should we, should we have a consensus to do that?
That's fine, Sean.
No, I mean, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, see if, if they're willing to do it, and we can't tell the planning board what to do, but we can certainly make a recommendation of that we would like them to look at it and work with PSNH.
That's definitely something we should do. It is a trouble spot, and it does feed the western part of the town going into Litchfield, too, like they said. Why don't we do this for now? Let's let them get through this, and then we'll flip the lights back on, and then we can start doing questions. Because I, I know I have a pamphlet full. So, but that's a great idea for us to do that. I'm sure that it's a good way to go. So Elizabeth, why don't you continue through, get through your, your presentation, and then we'll turn the lights on, and then we'll start going into the questions.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Sean, thank you. Emergency Response Plan, we noted this was another question that the town council had. Public service, Mark used to be our Emergency Planning Director. We used to have one model, but we've changed that. And we first used it in the 2008 storm, and it worked well for us. And it was modeled after National Emergency Response Plan that, on my understanding, was, was developed by the fire departments across the US. Incident Management Plan, and it was a best practice. And we did that so we could communicate more efficiently with municipal officials. And we think it's worked well. And of course, if you folks don't, we need to know that, or it can be improved, of course, please let us know. We did add positions, liaison positions, based on your feedback from '08. Every public service employee that can work storms, some of the employees need to stay in the power plants. But everyone other than those folks are given storm assignments, sand to go training, and they participate in drills or exercises. Retirees, particularly those with line department or engineering knowledge, are called back to assist either directing crews or escorting crews from out of state, doing damage assessment, and other things of that nature. This is getting into the storms, what's been going on. Most of us that worked at public, work at public service, been there for many years. I've been there for 30 years. Mark, what, 35 for you, or 30 for you? 31 for Mark. In the 90s, we remember those storms. They were not, they were not, not major. Now, this chart is saying, if you see the black roof, that means it occurred during the summer. If it's the white roof, then it was snow or ice. We had some strange storms, the north, but typically, what has happened in New Hampshire is the storms have come up the Connecticut River Valley. They've hit and damaged Keene, Monadnock, Newport, Claremont, swung over to Chikora, maybe Rochester, and hit the north country, Lancaster, Berlin. But the ones starting in 2008, December '08, hit southern New Hampshire, below Concord. Unfortunately, in New Hampshire, most of the people live Concord South. So now you start seeing 2/3 of public service customers without power. None of us had ever seen anything like that in our careers. We thought that something was wrong with our system, but nothing was wrong. It was right. And it was based, we got that early indication before anybody had to get out on a truck, because people called in. So it's critical that you call public service to report your outage. Next storm, the windstorm. Now that's hitting places like Manchester, taking down huge maple trees. Not the pines, it's taking down maple trees. Then we have Irene. Thankfully, Irene was not a hurricane. It turned out to be a tropical storm. So it was only 125,000, 25% of our customers, just huge. And then finally, this last October storm, which Dave, Karen described as unfortunate because it came down with heavy wet snow, and the trees are fully leafed and therefore even more fragile. So there we are with the storm comparison chart. Next slide, please, Mark. So basically, it was a regional storm in October. It in fact impacted the northeast US. That makes it hard to find people to come to your assistance, including our sister companies in Connecticut, Mass., because they were worse than we were. Heavy wet snows with trees with leaves. New Hampshire hardest-hit areas this particular storm. Keene, Monadnock did okay. But southern New Hampshire, from New Whipswich to the coast, hit hard. And again, that's where the people in New Hampshire mostly reside. We had 300, excuse me, 663 crews working the storm. That includes line, service crews, they work from the wire that goes to your house. Electricians might be in there, Mark, tree crews. We had pre-staged crews, excuse me, Bob Allen made sure that the asp land tree crews were pre-staged at PSNH work centers before the storm hit to facilitate the repair. PSNH employees were advised midweek, plan to work a multi-day event, come to work with your bag packed because you might need to move around the state. Our EOC was up monitoring and working. And Saturday night, Doug and Jay and Mark, everybody, we all were in the office working. And then during the middle of the storm, we actually set up a satellite. This area was hit so hard that we set up a satellite in Hudson at the Walmart in Amherst. It was hard, hard hit, too, and we set up a satellite.
I would, I would just like to clarify what a crew consists of. A crew is, is two people, possibly three people per vehicle. So I just wanted to clarify what that was.
Major, the cause of these major storms, it is extreme weather, things that are hitting now southern New Hampshire. Southern New Hampshire, we don't have to deal with that typically, we, we have been lately. And we have a larger number of trees throughout New Hampshire, we're the second-most forwarded state after Maine. And what, what people are reminding us, the Bob Allens of the world are teaching the rest of us that have lived all our lives is, we deforested our state when, when we had farms in the middle of the 19th century, and they've grown up. And beyond that, our farming communities like Londonderry are now suburban. And when we build our housing developments, we plant trees. Now they're all growing up. And apparently, in the storm of '38, Hurricane of '38, it took down half the pine trees, and they're getting big. And they're coming down outside the trim zone. That means from across the street, we're not even touching them, and they're coming in. Boom. And so historically, as I said, most of them don't hit southern New Hampshire. Let's move on, Mark. Damage to Londonderry. Dave, you, I stand corrected here. Dave said that approximately 90% of Londonderry customers were out of power at the height of the storm. We know that we had 149 trouble spots in Londonderry. We had 26, 77 statewide. Trouble spots can be small. John, this can be the tree on the circuit, or it can be spans of wire that came down because the tree over there took down. Or it can be just somebody's, something smaller, like a neighborhood. Crews for Londonderry, we, as I said, we had a satellite here in Hudson for this region. We staged the crews that were working under the direction of the Hudson Satellite. If their Division Operations Manager from another part of the state was manning the Hudson Satellite. And he was staging and dispatching crews from Mammoth Road Sub for our area. The start of the storm, I, I, I lost my part at 7:00 PM Saturday night, but we know from our stats that some people here in town lost it starting at about 6:00. 99% of people were back about, I think November 4th was Friday, or whatever. November 4th, approximately 7:00, but Dave said that everybody was back at approximately day 7:00. Priorities, this is very important. And we've changed them based on feedback from municipal officials and the need to keep roads open. We used to just start fixing the infrastructure, we used to use number two. But now we start with number one. We need, we, we do what we call cut and clear away down wires in the roads in particular, because we, we know that municipal officials, police and fire, need to be able to respond to emergencies. And we understand that people need to be able to go to the hospital or do whatever they need to do to stay safe. Then we get to point two, the infrastructure, the transmission system. Really do our transmission substations have problems? Sometimes the transmission lines have problems, we need to fix them first. We'll, we'll have helicopters running around or flying around looking to make sure they're clear. These transmission lines must work because they feed the distribution substations, which in turn feed our backbones and the, the roads that we see going down our streets. And then we go to critical infrastructure. Now, we've expanded the definition of what this means, too, based on feedback from municipal and state officials. In the old days, we used to do police, fire, hospitals, only the schools where you sheltered. Water and sewer treatment facilities, for sure. Your shelters, wherever they would be. But based on also the facts relative to the aging demographics, we are now asked by the state officials and local officials to add nursing homes and all schools. So we have. Circuit backbones, that's the main drags. We get them next because you're talking thousands of people. And if we don't get them back, we can't get your house back or your neighborhood back. And then we do number five. Those are what we call the side taps. So if, if our line, let's say our line's running down here, here on 128, and we have a development off to the side, that's the side, side tap, side streets, basically. And then we go to the neighborhood. Maybe your cul-de-sac was out, and you were one of the last people back. That's what we're doing if the transformer, the can up in the air is, is, been damaged. And then finally, we go to people's homes or your business, and we get you back last. Because the, the idea here is, first of all, public safety, everyone. We need to keep our people and our customers and residents and visitors alive and safe. And secondly, we want to get power back as quickly as possible to the most people. How Londonderry can assist? You guys do an extraordinary job. And I cannot commend the calm, cool, brave demeanor of police and fire. They, they keep people like me, I'm not an emergency responder type, I'm not a lineman. And we've had major, these are turning into major disasters. And they keep us calm and focused, and they're very impressive. So you, do, folks do a great job. But here's what we, we all need to remember to do during major storms. We're asked to town liaison, the fire chief, or Dave's backing them up, to report your down, your downed wires blocking roads to public service. We'll get to them, we'll put a crew aside, a one-man crew possibly, and they'll drive around and get those cleared for you. Then we need you to report your critical infrastructure to us, and then tell us when you get it back to make sure we, we know what's going on. Sometimes we think we got it back, and we didn't for some unknown reason. And then finally, if you can maintain that one point of contact, it just doesn't exhaust, it keeps us from getting exhausted. it keeps us from getting exhausted. We, now, other times, non-emergencies, during the rest of the time, we encourage residents to develop their own emergency plans. If you can help, the town can help us deal with the medical emergency people. Oftentimes, these folks think that they're golden because we've got them coded on the system, but if they're on the end of the line, they might have a long wait and we don't want anybody running out of oxygen or what have you. Mobile home parks, and we know that they tend to get cold very, very fast. Sometimes it's not, we're not able to get to them. 55 and older communities, I'm 53, I'm fairly self-sufficient, but you know, that means we could have 70, 80, 90-year-old people living there. They might not have anywhere else to go. We know that's an emergency. There's just too many of them cropping up across the state of New Hampshire because we're aging. We had farms that wanted us to get to them, but again, they tended to be out in the remote parts of where we were dealing with in terms of restoration. So that, if you can help us get them organized or get them with an emergency plan, that would be very helpful. I'm going to make sure the chief has a list of critical accounts. I printed it off, there's about 20. If, we want to make sure that we're up to date and that we don't, we didn't miss any. We need the addresses, we need your account numbers, everything has to be accurate so we can get out there quickly. And we want you to feel free, and we encourage you to report your hazard trees to us. We'll come and tell you if we think it's a danger or not. I know Bob is very responsive, most of the time, communities are very happy. And we encourage residents to allow us to trim or remove a tree if Bob's knocking on your door. And then finally, it's really important, at the beginning, at the end of the storms, for residents to call in their outage, even if their neighbors call in, because beginning of the storm, it tells us the magnitude before we even have a damage accessor out there. And at the end, it makes sure we didn't forget someone whose service wire is not connected. Mr. Chairman, with that, that's the end of our presentation.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Okay, just give it a second, Dave's going to turn the lights back on. All right, at this point, John had started asking some good questions. We've had a lot of issues in the past with, in particular, Adams Road as well as other things. I guess, at this point, I have a list of stuff too, as I'm sure the other councils do. So I think what we'll do is, we'll start with John and work our way through the council, and then we'll go out to the public and try to ask questions and go from there. So, John?
I guess, let's close the last thing. Why don't we see if we want to give direction to Dave, to ask the planning board to work with these folks on what's an acceptable plan for Adams Road going forward, considering it's a scenic byway, yet let's also consider, you know, what the functionality of the community needs to be, and see if there's some sort of midway point we can meet. Second thing, I probably addressed the PSNHs, and then I'll let the rest of the council move on, is the thing I didn't hear in here was, is your preference of communication from the community. You're saying call. Okay, everybody calls on their cell phones. A lot of the cases now, the telephone lines are down. You know, in the last storm, it seemed that the best mode of communication to PSNH wound up being a, an independent website here in town that was twittering information and pushing information to you, and that the crews were responding, you know, based on that information, not necessarily, and I almost fell over when I heard that we were faxing you. I couldn't really understand that. But, you know, and I was also very active during the storm, so I have a clear understanding of what the communication looked like. But what is the best way to push information towards you? Because from what I understand from your advocates is, is you prefer information pushed towards you so that you can react to it and have a plan.
John, the customers, what we ask them to do, if they've got phone services, to call that 1-800 number. They're probably going to get the automated system, and then we get the record. If they have no phone access, they have, can get access to a computer, it's the website. We knew that the LondonDerry.org website was up and running with tweets.
Dot org was not up and running and had no information.
Yeah, no.
Dot net's a private one.
Your press right.
That was up and running and had information.
Yeah.
So, and that information, my understanding was, and I'm sure I can be corrected, is that that was citizens in the community tweeting to them, and them putting up the information or calling on their cellphone and them putting up the information, and then that particular site pushing the information to the legislative, legislators who were pushing information to you. And at one point, I actually spoke to one of your, and your representatives are all great. I mean, you know, they're easy to talk to and everything else. And they kept telling me, I'm looking at LondonDerryNH.org. I was like, there's nothing there. So I don't know what you're looking at.
All right, we're going to have to work on that, John. Thank you for that.
So.
Talk to Kathy and Steve about that.
Well, just, if social media is the best way?
It's appreciated.
Tell us, and let's figure it out together.
Absolutely. At this point, yeah, no, that, we got a noodle on that. Thanks for the heads up. We're trying to get more information. We actually have a corporate communication person that just deals with Twitter and tweet. And actually, what we're finding out, but we do it out, and what we're finding out with these big storms is people are delaying their vacation, like the windstorm, until they get power back at their home. So the tweet worked for them because they were getting this on their cell phones. So our world is definitely changing. Now, to your point about the fax machine, believe me, I know it's a dinosaur thing, but let me tell you where that came from. We have a special 1-800 phone number for municipal officials so they can, they can get through. It's for your police and fire to report. We got a person with a live wire down on their car, can you please get out here quickly? That kind of thing. Or Yanos called me on it one time, I think, maybe he called me after he was, Elizabeth, our sewer situation is going to be critical in like an hour. That's what we want, that 1-800, that confidential number to be, phone number. But a few years ago, we had a double fatality in Windham, excuse me, where, very, very tragic, couple killed in their car, could not get through on that 1-800 confidential phone to PSNH because Gothstone also had a very serious accident and a lot of other outages. So all the municipal officials were calling through. We only had three phone lines, I think, and three people dealing with that thing. So somebody came up with, 10 years ago, why don't we have a fax machine so we can at least fax you? Like, good idea. So again, we know it's dated, and we definitely need to move away from that, use the technology. So we, believe me, we know fax is ridiculous, but it was from years ago and it worked for the time. So that's that.
I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have several questions, so please bear with me. The first thing I wanted to mention is that in our community in London Dairy, for well over 10 years, probably close to 15 or 20 years, we've had development specifications in place that all new developments bury the utility lines. And that certainly alleviates the stress on tree trimming if the lines are underground. But my question is, what about the other communities you service? These rules and regulations we have in place are local ordinances. Do you communicate the need to do that in other communities, and are other communities being receptive to that? Are there still communities that don't require underground utilities for new developments?
I don't know the exact number, but I would say very few communities require that.
Well, the question, are you, is that a communication that you are pushing back to the community, say, you can help us if you did what London Dairy did, or did what Hudson does, whatever example you want to give, so they can copy these ordinances that we have, and it might alleviate some of your issues. I mean, there's been a lot of publicity in the press about what it would cost to bury the infrastructure, and I don't think anyone's going to suggest that. But we are still a growth state. I mean, we're in a lull right now, but New Hampshire is projected to continue to grow over the next few decades. That certainly would incrementally, as the state continued to grow, would help if the rest of the communities did require underground utilities going forward for new development.
I'm not sure if we were out there stumping for neighborhoods, the communities, to put in underground lines. Our experience is, and we've spent extensive money, Shasta Drive comes to my mind, Shasta's in London Dairy. After 25 or 30 years, those underground systems all have to be replaced. So to say that we're out there saying that's the way to go, we wouldn't necessarily make that push. It's fantastic during a storm situation when you have trees coming down, there's no doubt about that. Both systems have their pluses and minuses, though.
Okay, my next question is about, I think it was on slide five of the presentation. You had a trimming, tree trimming specification that I believe was the fifth bullet on the slide. Eight feet on either side of the wire, 10 feet below it, and 15 feet above it?
Yes.
What's the origination of that specification? Where does that come from?
That came after Hurricane Gloria in 1986. We had an environmental consultant out of Pennsylvania came in and studied all three states that northeast utility works in, the native species that grow in those states. And we wanted to be on a four- to five-year cycle, what the amount of growth we would have from an average tree in four to five years. So that was the determination that that would be the clearance zone that would work best for a four- to five-year cycle.
Is that an industry-accepted spec, or is that a kind of a homegrown spec that you've adopted?
Well, it wouldn't be industry because there's different trees in different parts of the country that grow at different rates. So for New England, it's certainly more common as the spec. Certainly when we had the ice storm, we had, in 2008, we had consultants come in that the PUC asked to have study all the tree trimming zones that the utilities in New Hampshire use, and ours was considered to be the one that should be adopted. So I think it's standard that way. It's a good spec. We mentioned earlier this enhanced tree trimming, and that is ground to sky. We do cut a lot more on that type of trimming. Consequently, costs more to get that work done, but we try to focus on the main backbones and the lines that will affect the most people and give us the greatest good for that type of trimming.
It just would seem intuitive to me that the top side of that spec, the 15 feet above, it seems like you would want that to be a sky limit spec. As trees come down, they come from above the wires typically. And I guess I would encourage you to revisit that spec to see if it made sense to, instead of 15 feet above, maybe 30 feet above, or maybe to the sky. And that seems to me that that might require more trimming, at least initially, to get, you know, to get through some non-recurring trimming. But on a maintenance mode, that might help alleviate some of the branches coming down from above.
That's a great point. The issue that we have sometimes with that type of situation is, we have to get permission to trim the trees. We don't own the trees. And so we have to talk to every individual landowner to let us trim the tree. And sometimes that type of trimming isn't as accepted as you would think.
Do we need permission even in the right-of-way?
Yes.
In the town right-of-way?
We have to ask consent of the tree owner, yes.
Do we need permission in the town right-of-way?
We usually do secure it. You just do stone wall, stone wall. Yanos?
Yeah, we can work within the stone wall, stone wall, but we have to notify everybody of the owner of the tree that we're going to be doing it.
Maybe perhaps we could help with some local publicity.
That would be great.
That's something that, we would encourage our local owners to give permission.
Bless you.
If we own that right-of-way in fee, we do not need the permission. But if it's a right-of-way, old right-of-way, that we always ask about us. We always ask, we leave the trees for them if they need a tree. But anything within town right-of-way with the new, when we own in fee, right-of-way in fee.
Do we live to that same spec, or do we go to the sky, above?
No, we trim the trees whatever we need when they're dead trees. We do not trim for the power line, for the need of, we don't touch that at all for that reason. We only trim them when they are dead and they are falling on the road.
Yanos, what's your estimation regarding how many rights-of-way as a percentage do we actually own, and how many are just old roads laid out, which we do have a right-of-way?
Maybe 30% is in fee, the rest is in.
70 is a right-of-way.
Next question I had was around generators. These last few years, the local generator business is booming, which represents a couple of challenges for you. The challenge is, if homeowners are putting power out to the street accidentally, I imagine that presents a safety risk for you.
Yes.
You may want to talk to and help advise the public on how to protect the linesman with that. The other issue for the homeowner, though, and our fire department, police department are diligent about this, is that especially in bad weather, there is a tendency for some homeowners who aren't considering all the safety aspects of dragging those portable generators into their open-door garages, keep them out of the weather, which represents a severe safety risk from the exhaust of those generators. And I know that our local, our local safety folks drive around, and if they see that situation, they immediately tell the homeowners to take them out of the garages or a certain distance away from the home itself to protect the homeowners from the dangers of the exhaust. So there are two, at least two, safety issues around increased use of generators that these situations are causing. Last question I have is on metrics. You did show us in the presentation a metric around the increased spend over the past eight years or so from, I think, 60, 6 million to 14 million, I think the numbers were, of expenditures on tree trimming. I'd be curious to know about it and expanded use of metrics. You must keep metrics around number of crews per mile of wire that you have out there, or per roads, or number of crews per customer, or number of, you know, metrics like that. And so it's, without us understanding those metrics, it's hard for us to make any judgments about how well the company is keeping up with the needs of maintaining the lines and maintaining the trees and so forth. Could you share with us any of those metrics, or is that something you could take away and get back to us with?
Certainly, we could get back to you on that. I just speak for the tree trimming, and we're on a four- to five-year cycle, and we believe 100 crews is about right for that. We start, and when I took over this position in 2009, we had 75 crews. We went to 85 in 2010, and now we're up to 100 in 2012. So we see the need to continue to expand the tree trimming program. As far as metrics for line crews, I don't know that, I can't speak to that, and I don't know that we have those.
So if they had 663 crews and 237 out, it was one crew for every 357 customers in this last storm?
Good question.
Well, that's a normal.
663 crews, that wasn't in London Dairy. That was statewide.
That was statewide. Right, and 237,000 out were statewide as well, so.
Right, got it.
Yeah, I'm just doing the math.
So it would be curious to know if you could maybe follow some of that information back to the town manager to help us understand. And I think that would be something we would want to check periodically, and we could look over time to trend, you know, are those metrics trending positive, are they staying flat, are they trending negative? Is the number of crews per customer, for example, going up, going down, staying about the same? It's intuitive to me that as, in London Dairy, as more and more of our wires are buried, that the tree trimming load should go down per customer, because new customers should not need tree trimming if their wires are underground. So you would think that would be alleviating the situation slowly over time, but it's hard to see that without looking at some of those metrics. So I would, and I understand some of that may be comparative sensitive information, but it would be, it would be good if you could share with us what you could share so that we could have a better feel for, you know, statistically, and make an independent evaluation.
We do have some of those metrics, and Elizabeth will work with your town manager to get that for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Going back to the question regarding contact by customers to PSNH, I wonder if you could help me out with something because, you know, now that December's over, I'm sure the next mailing I'm going to get from PSNH is going to be the increased electric bill from my Christmas lights. So I guess my question is, if you know that I put up candles in the windows and lights outside, it's an increase from November when I didn't have that, how come you don't know my power's out and the whole street's out?
By the way, there's no charge for the comedy.
Even if it's bad sometimes.
Sorry, as far, from an automated perspective, you're talking?
Well, I mean, how do you know that I'm not an atheist and don't have no Christmas lights out? I get a bill, and I'm going to tell you, for 13, 14 years I've been up. I get a bill that I'm going to tell you for thirteen, fourteen years I've been up here. It's, it's higher in January than it is in, you know, December, which, you know, it's a month, reflects a month back. So you guys got to have some records that know that power's coming to my house. And I, I'm just wondering is, you know, why can't your accounting department talk to your repair department?
We don't have smart meters yet, Tom. We have, um.
Well, the accounting department seems to have.
Well, Tom, we have, every house has an electrical address associated with it. However, an electrical address could be the same on your house as, as the fourth or fifth house or as your entire neighborhood. It's a device out on the pole. If that opens up, your whole neighborhood could be out. We ask people to call in because we might not have a device out, yet there could be people in the neighborhood out. The service to their home is down, something like that. But we do know areas that are without power. We have an electrical address system. In fact, you're part of perhaps the, one of the best electrical addressing systems in the state. So we do have, we do have a handle on general, general alities. Say that ten times fast. But if there is not a device out, we need you to call to tell us that your house doesn't have power.
Okay, well, okay. Now, understanding that, what's the criteria before, for example, on my street, how many calls from my street do you need to send a truck out there? Let's say it's not a storm, just a, you know, problem.
Just one.
Just one call in there?
But the, to speak to what Mark was talking about, if everybody from your street calls, initially, say like day one, everybody from the street's calling because the whole street's out. And then we make that repair and you call in and you don't, you know, we don't get any information as far as, you know, my power's out but my neighbor's is on or, you know, the line from the pole to my house is down. We may think that we picked your house up as well because we didn't have any special notes on a separate ticket. What we do early on is try to go through, we get all the wires down so we can get a list and get people out to make those areas safe per our restoration process. And then we'll go through the tickets and code the best we can, the service related outages, to know that, again, per our restoration process, those fall down to the bottom. So the best thing you could do is to call, you know, call in if your neighbors have power and you still don't. And, you know, not everybody's an industry expert. I mean, you can look outside and see if the wire's down from your house or from the pole or what the situation may be. But my suggestion would be to continue to call in so that we have that record.
But if I could ask, because you're asking to get information to you, what is going to be better for you? Is it, is it better that the town filters it and says, this street is out? Or you just want customers to call?
It is, it is. We don't want you, Tom, to have to do that. It's, because we actually have added additional automation relative to the phone system where people call in. They call us on the phone, it's in the system where we can call them back when it's back. So we have automation that we're trying to use. And we don't want you to be bottlenecked. We know it's very hard for town officials when they're, they've received phone calls not to feel the need to report it in and to tell, you know, you want to provide good service and you don't want to say to the resident, call public service and hang up. But it actually is helpful for you to direct and recommend to the customer that they call public service directly. And then our customer service representative is going to have a list of questions for that customer. All right, tell me, Mr. Jones, is your neighbor out? Did they hear a loud bang? They have a series of questions and they'll get more intel and it will direct the line crews, help them figure out what's going on.
And, and you're preferring actual telephone calls versus some sort of internet?
The web is fine too, whatever works for folks.
Tom, we're looking for that exact address. And lots of times if, if you have your residents calling, calling you or somebody else, even the, the police folks or fire, we don't get that exact address. We get, we get, we get, we get a statement saying that this house is out on Adams Road. If we get the customer to call in, as soon as they call, if, if we have their number on, in our system, it automatically comes up with their address. Beyond that, if it doesn't come up, they give us their exact address and the details of what we're talking about.
The last thing I have is, I imagine you, when you do go through your work, you must have some sort of records or work orders from all your crews about, we worked on this street, we worked on this street. Do you have any history by storm per street? Because perhaps like a lot of things, you keep getting the same problems in the same places. And could you give us some kind of, you know, feedback on that so that, you know, that might be helpful to the police or the fire department?
Absolutely. If I may, Tom, on that note, you know, Tom Dolan, you mentioned the tree trimming specs. One of the things that we, we had in December, and I invited Dave to one of them. I know most of you folks, or maybe all of you work, because I invited you and Dave to the legislative luncheons we had. But we're, we're going to actually, it's the legislature to help us with the tree trimming laws. We in oh-eight got permission to have streamlined permissioning, permitting process. So after forty-five days, if we don't hear from the customer, it's implied consent. And we also were given a little, something to the effect of, to your point, if a town road continues to be a problem and the residents on that road say no for whatever reason, we go to the town, you folks, and bring it to your attention and say, we believe this is a problem for a larger group of people. And we try to get your help to resolve that. And I, I know that we're trying to get more flexibility in terms of the, the zone and permitting because we have a fourteen million dollar budget. One million approximately is spent on getting permission.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe, before I go to you? Tom had a piggyback question onto Tom's.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to follow up on something that Counselor Frieda said. In the term, in terms of the technology of communication, we're talking a lot about making telephone calls. And going forward, as our communication gets smarter, have you developed or are you developing maybe an app or an application for smartphones or for computers so that I could use my BlackBerry and I could, with a couple of taps, tell you that I'm out of power? Without having to dial into a telephone system that may be trying to handle several thousand phone calls?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. Again, Mike Skeleton from the Communications Department. The answer is yes. In the industry, that type of functionality is developing. It has not reached a point yet where we think it's at a point where we could deploy it. You know, the technology tends to move pretty quickly with these things. And then there's also the challenge of integrating it with your existing systems. But PSNH is one of the more progressive utilities in terms of use of social media technology. We have, you know, our Twitter and Facebook pages are widely used during storm events and afterwards. And anything we can do to integrate that further with our customer base is something we're very interested in doing. So I can tell you that we're, we're looking at that very closely. And when a time comes that we feel like we can do it effectively, I think we'll give it very strong consideration.
Thank you. One thing as far as, I'm piggybacking on that if you'd stay put for a second, instead of bringing it up later. One question I know is going to be asked, probably from some of the older residents. We're now in the digital age. When people lose power, they don't have phone. What recommendations do you have for them?
In terms of communication with?
In terms of them telling you that they have an outage. Because rotary phones are gone. So when you lost power years ago, when I was a kid, you could pick up the rotary phone and still dial in.
Right.
Now, you don't have that option, you get nothing.
Yeah, it's.
That's a problem.
Absolutely. And I think it's, in terms of, one of the recommendations we make to customers is to have a plan and be prepared for an outage. And how you can not only yourself, take care of yourself if you have an emergency situation, a medical condition or you have family that you need to take care of, but also your personal plan for how you can communicate. And, you know, I know in the early parts of an outage, customers who have cell phones, we hear from them on Twitter and Facebook all the time. But, you know, then we start to get the messages that, hey, I need to recharge my battery soon. So cell phones don't last forever and we're aware of that as well. But I think it comes down to having a plan for how you're going to be able to communicate. If you're able to go to your place of work and make a phone call. If you're ever able to go to your gym and make a phone call. If you're able to go to a friend's house. If you're able to go to Starbucks and recharge your phone. Those are all options out there. But certainly we understand the challenges that customers face when they're out of power and they're dependent upon that power to communicate with us.
One thing I think that we probably might want to consider as a council, as part of our second discussion of your view tonight, would be to incorporate into our response is maybe have the town, the town hall and open up a communication point so that residents that don't have a way of communicating an outage can do so by reporting it here. That may be something that we can do.
Sure, that's an excellent suggestion.
That's something we should probably look into too.
Yeah, I think that goes back to each, each individual in each community having a plan. And whatever we can do to support that effort, I think we would be more than willing to do.
Right, okay.
So if I can just follow up just on one quick thing here. On your communication plan, saying going into the future, do you have a timetable of when you're looking to make a transition to the, more to, let's say the digital age as an example? Because what you've explained to me is, is that, this is what I've heard, I want two hundred and thirty-seven thousand calls. Unacceptable. Doesn't work today.
We have the capability to, to take that amount of calls and we actually, over the course of the storm.
How, people are going to sit on hold for some period of time. Okay, it's going to happen.
Yeah.
Okay, there, there is vehicles today, which I can pick this up, go to your website and send you a message. And you should be able to retrieve it in a portal and be able to take that information. When do you think you're going to have that kind of portal ready?
I, I can't give you a specific timeline, I can tell you that.
So there's no project?
Absolutely. There, there is a, a project team at PSNH right now that's looking at how to integrate technology more into, into storm restoration process. And that work has been ongoing. The issue, sir, is that technology is moving very, very quickly and.
I sell software for a living. I know how fast it's moving.
Yeah.
Okay, I also know how, how much time you need to be able to have a capital project to be able to put that portal in place. And you're talking two years if you haven't done anything. And I know how that's, how long it takes. You start tomorrow, it takes two years.
Right.
Okay, so it's at least two years.
Sir, I can tell you that, you know, I'd be happy to go back and talk to the project team and then, and talk with you about their timeline. But I can tell you, we're moving as quickly as we can. And with, with all of these things, we have to make sure we're making the right decision for our customer and that's an economic decision for our customers as well. And that's the, that's the biggest factor.
I understand, but if you, as I said, if you have not made a decision and you have not started a project, those kind of projects run eighteen to twenty-four months to implement and bring up and go live successfully.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Joe?
Okay, I got to look down the list of things that other councils have already asked on the last. So I did want to comment about Counselor Dolan's comment on the tree trimming. I, I guess, I guess the question that I wanted to really get out to you people would be, is it in your opinion, a fact that based on the information that you got and the problems that you incurred during the last outage that you do need to uptick your enhanced trimming or unplanned pruning? I mean, I want to, I know that's come out, but I haven't really heard that you guys said, yeah, you know what? We may be a little bit behind, the growth is spurtin' faster than we can keep up with it based on this last storm. I think we need to, we need more than six hundred and sixty-three crews or we need to have some other way of tackling it, so.
If you're speaking to enhanced tree trimming.
Ground to sky?
Yes. We are, we have been planning, or we are planning and implementing our, all our backbone lines across the state to get enhanced tree trimming. That makes the most sense, gets the most customers back up quicker. It is an expensive proposition to take down trees every, every section of line. So it, we, we do about fifty miles a year of enhanced tree trimming. And that costs about two million dollars. It's in addition to our fourteen million dollar program.
We pay the highest rates in the nation, so I think that we can afford it.
I don't know what the rates are, but.
I do, I do a lot of homework.
Okay. So that, that's a good suggestion that we could do more ETT, enhanced tree trimming?
Well, it's an ob, it's an obvious one that I'm, you know, you guys are in a little microcosm of, of the rest of us. We're just, well, we're out of electric. You know, we, we don't, we can't afford to be out of electric. Why is this happening? And this is what you're going to hear from a lot of residents. And you're saying that it's, it's a simple matter of maybe upticking, upticking the, the ground to sky and enhanced trimming. And we're going to all probably ask you then, let's do it, you know? That's a simple, that's a simple answer, I know, and simple, to the simple question. But you guys got to figure out a way of, you know, balancing, you know, the service versus, you know, when these, these, these events happen, you know, balancing those logistics. But thank you for that. The other one that I had a question on that the council already asked, but I want to kind of explore a little bit further was the underground wires. I live in southern, southern part of Londonderry and we got power back rather quickly versus the Griffin Road off southern, off South Road section. And when we heard that it was kind of strange that they weren't up yet, Mammoth Road was up, we heard that there were, I guess, service from Litchfield and it was because that there was lines, there were lines that are actually underground that you had to dig up. Was that true or is that, is that something that? I mean, we were talking about lines and we were talking about, hey, lines are great to go underneath, underneath the ground. And you were talking about kind of balancing that. But it was a pretty significant six, five or six day outage in that area, in that one pocket. And we heard that it was, we had some testimony that it was due to the fact that they were serviced from a different part or something and that there was underground wires that had to be looked at. So I'm just wondering what exactly that, that happened there, in that area? Does anybody know?
I'm wondering on a specific, do you have a more specific location?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's Griffin Road. I mean, it's Griffin Road, it's basically the southern part of Londonderry out towards Nashua. So if you look at Mammoth Road, it's kind of, if you're heading down towards Windham, it's the right side of Mammoth Road. That was, that was a problem. And it was, and, and the strange thing, like I said, like we said, everybody thought, okay, you know, underground wires, this is great. You know, we don't see the wires up on the top of the trees. And how could we possibly be out of power right now? And, and I know this gentleman here talked to us a little bit about twenty-five to thirty years changing the wires. But when the testimony that we heard at the last meeting, when we, when we talked about, talked about this issue, we heard that there was actually digging crews there. So just wondering if that's, in other words, anytime that we have a problem like this, we want to learn from it. And that might have taught us something about these type of events. So we, we wanted to get more information, or at least I wanted to get more information to try to balance that decision. And other cul-de-sacs that have underground wires, as Counselor Dolan alluded to, we're asking people that are making these developments to go underground and maybe that's not the right decision. So we need to know how that failed and why that failed in order to kind of go back to the planning board and maybe adjust what we need to adjust.
I guess first off, I would say that, you know, that whole area wouldn't be off because of an underground line. I know we had an issue at Holton Circle and we have many issues at Holton Circle that we are rectifying. To speak to what Mark Sandler talked about earlier, being that Londonderry and Windham as well, we're on the early stages of, you know, essentially forcing the underground in new residential areas. When those were put in, they were just put in the ground and covered. So now we, there's conduit and the wires run in the conduit. So it's much easier for us to make the repairs on new stuff than the existing. The existing, you know, direct buried as we call it, you got to get someone out there, you got to test it. We're going to find it and then you actually have to have the equipment to dig it up, to expose it and repair it, which, as you referred to, is quite lengthy depending on how deep it is, how long it takes them to find it.
Because the crews, yeah, the crews were on that, in that area and it might be Holton Circle, I don't know. The person didn't identify themselves, so I wasn't sure how to get back to that person. Maybe they're watching now. But the point is, is that the crew, the crew and the digging happened for two or three days over there. So, and you guys can go back and take a look at it and just get back to us, that'd be great. Just that data piece, I think, is important to. Just, that data piece, I think, is important to identify and understand so that we can go forward and make the adjustments we need to make. And then, I have, Mr. Chairman, I have action statements as far as what actions we want to take going forward. I guess that'll come after, right? As far as the shelter and all these other things, steps that we can take to make things a little bit better, emergency plans?
Yeah, why don't you put that to the second half?
Okay, I'll put that second half. Okay, so the last question that I have, then, is basically the elephant in the room, and that is, we heard over and over that the public did not see any work crews for more than two or three days out there, and so everybody, I'm sure, is very curious to know why that's happened. We already heard testimony that you guys started up very quickly, but that's not, that's contrary to what we've been told by our residents. So, might as well get that out there and ask that question.
Joe, I could take a shot at that. When we talked about the priorities, and this is one question Dave had for me in '08, he said, "I didn't see a cruise, Elizabeth. I've driven around the whole town." We start at the substation, and we check those transmission lines, and we start, and we check the distribution and transmission substation sometimes, and that's not, those are usually not along the roads and highways. People don't see us working there. And sometimes, we fix the problem at the substation, and we're good, and it can affect power in another community. So, oftentimes, we've got to start there and make sure we don't have a problem with the infrastructure, and then work our way out. Sometimes, we could be there for days.
So, maybe I'm asking a different question, so let me clarify. I'll give you this scenario. We had testimony of a woman come in, and she said, if I remember, "Hey, I was up at Dunkin' Donuts or somewhere, and we saw a bunch of trucks, and they had a different name on them, and they kind of had an accent." And it was three days later, and those were the first trucks that we had seen in Londonderry for three days, and nobody had power restoring. Small here and there, but I guess that's what I'm talking about. Those guys, the troops on the ground, as I'll call it, didn't arrive for three days, and so that was very surprising to the residents and people that were suffering in the shelters. I was, like Council Farrel said, I was very active going out when you don't have work, you don't have work, so going out to try to find out where things, what was going on in the town and going to the shelters, and that was the thing that people were so up at arms about, is that they didn't see any trucks as they were driving around that town either, so.
I know for a fact that we were, we were definitely at the substation on the first day because we lost the substation, and we got the feed down Mammoth Road toward the commercial part of Nashua Road on that first day. And, you know, before that, they, you know, they're going, per our restoration priorities, they're all over the place just trying to clear the roads to make it safe for people who don't have power to mobilize and get to someplace that they can actually stay, albeit a shelter, a friend's house, or whatever it may be. But, we did have crews in Londonderry on that first day to work down Mammoth Road and down 102 toward Dairy to pick up, you know, the places that people without power would need to go, supermarkets, whatever other restaurants may be over there, kind of thing. On day one, we most certainly had...
So, I guess what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get out of you guys, and maybe it's me that has to say it first, and I'll ask the question, were you actually just waiting for these guys from out of town, out of the state, to come to help you because you're just under manned with the amount of trucks that you had? And this was such a big event that spreading your utility trucks around just would not have made a big enough impact, and in order to make that large impact that you were looking for, you had to wait for three days for these guys to come from down south? I mean, is that really what happened? I mean, I'm just, I have to ask the question because everybody, I'm sure, at least I, I'll speak for myself, I'm not satisfied with the answer I just heard, so I'm sure the residents here, because I can see their heads going back and forth and up and down, they're not really happy with it either. So, and that's why we're here. We're trying to figure out, you know, I don't want to, I'm not trying to point fingers and name-call and all these things, but that's really the issue that we're talking about. We need a quicker response, we need to be up quicker, and I understand your procedures, but sometimes when the trucks are on the road, people kind of get a calming sensation in not having those trucks. I mean, when I went into the shelter and heard that from several people, that, "But, Joe, there's no trucks. There's no trucks," you know, and that's all I kept hearing.
Joe, if I could just quick-hit that. We absolutely do not wait on anybody to start our restoration process. None whatsoever. We have two area work centers that serve this community, and we were here from day one. And I think Doug Fraser from our Hooks at Area Works Center would like to talk about what his area did for you. It's not only Dairy, that area works center that works on Londonderry lines, so I think it's important that you know it's two different area work centers in the company.
But before you get started, you said that the substation went down. Is that unusual for a substation to go down in this type of event?
No.
Completely?
Part of what Mark talked about earlier. It just takes a limb or a tree across all three phases that won't clear itself.
So, it's something that you can expect to do, so you would know that that's going to go down first, so you would need to have crews out there. Anytime, if I look and say, "Oh, it's going to snow out, okay, is the plow truck coming?" You would say, "Okay, it's going to be a major event. I need to get people ready at the substation, and that needs to be the first." Almost before the situation happens, you should, you would have people there waiting, because if you know it's going to happen, have it ready. As soon as it happens, people would be there and ready to fix it, right? I mean, is that something that you could pre-plan for?
We do ask the line crews and support personnel if we know ahead of time to come in early. Do we put a truck at the substation before we actually know if there's outages? No.
I'm just saying, I know it sounds crazy to say that sentence that you just said, but if you said, if you talked about the fact that you, it's very usual for a substation to go down, if that's the first thing, we want to get past the first and second stage, obviously, as fast as we can, the first and second step, as you guys have in here in your action plan, to get to the third, which is restoring the people. So, that's, I'm just throwing it out there.
My name is Doug Fraser from PSNH with the Hooks at Area Work Center. And in response to a couple of your questions, as far as crews working in the town of Londonderry, I know that we had crews working in Londonderry, in the northern section of Londonderry. As far as visibility, to Elizabeth's point, at the beginning of the storm, it is a little tougher to see the crews. Some sections of the main lines that serve the substations, as well as that come from the substations, are off-road, so they wouldn't be as highly visible as they work in those off-road sections of the line. And they, those backbone sections of a line transition from, possibly from one town to another town, to allow us then to get that section restored. So, we did have crews working in Londonderry. I know that on Sunday, we had crews working Mammoth Road, working out towards the Yard Restaurant in that area, going out Mammoth Road up to the gas station and then working down towards the Yard Restaurant. So, I guess that kind of, as far as seeing the crews at the very beginning and having them visible, it's a little more challenging than it is as we get further into the storm, and now we're starting to get into the side roads where people are seeing us in the small neighborhoods.
I guess, you know, we were being updated by the town manager on a regular basis once everything came, kind of came up as far as web, cellphone use, et cetera, but, and this is going to go to the action statement later that I'm going to present or ask about, and that is updates to our shelter via satellite or via some sort of cellphone service. And again, the cellphone service isn't, not working because of power outage or whatever, but then we switch over to satellite. But, I think one of the things that maybe we can think about is being specific about where those work crews are, because I think information is calming effect, and there was a little bit of kind of people running around with their hair on fire, kind of, "Where are they? Where are they?" You know, and so if we were able to somehow get that information, we talked a lot about information coming to you, but we also need to look at information coming from you to us, and it's very difficult where there's no power, TVs, cable, gone, and so those tweets out, automatic tweets, we have alerts from our police department, we have alerts from our school. Maybe that's a way to maybe communicate with an automatic tweet going out as you go forward. And I'm going to suggest also a live feed in our shelter, if that's possible, to go forward, but saying the information that you said at the time it's happening, we have crews on these roads, at the substation, here are the amount of crews we have, so that it's an accountability issue for the public.
Can I ask you to guard against specific locations so that the crews do not get inundated with folks going out to speak with them to find out when their power's going to come on?
Okay.
The crews themselves do not decide where they're going next. In the office, as we're planning out today, we have people planning out, you know, by the set of criteria that we have, where the next location is that we're going to work, so that, you know, to have crews inundated with residents from the town showing up on the job site to ask those types of questions, you know, would only hinder progress.
I guess, I guess, let me clarify that, then. So, if you were up in the northern part of town and you knew that it was going to restore this block or this section of town first, you could say that you're in that area, as an example. Not specifically what address it is, but say, you know...
Yeah, I just, just to guard against it where that...
North Mammoth Road, and we'll be, come up first, and we'll work there, and be a little bit more, so this way we know kind of where you go in the progress, and we can, and on that, and on that map, you know, I envision it where we have a map of Londonderry, and we know that you're in a vicinity, and that's where you're going to be coming up first, because people, planning reasons, saying, "Okay, should I go back to my house? Should I not go back to my house? Why is this block coming up, and I'm right next to it and I'm not here?" We would know that because we, not everybody understands the chart that you guys have in front of you as to, you know, how things are connected. But if we had that at a shelter, and people could see it, or as the other councils alluded to, be able to get onto a website, I mean, and be able to see Londonderry and be able to see that come up, that's going to, again, information's really going to calm people.
Joe, if I could just interject, that's all well and good, and it sounds good, and we'll do whatever we can to help you out in that endeavor, but I would caution you to not give out too much information. Unfortunately, in these types of situations, there is a criminal element, and I think you could talk to your police department, because people monitoring areas that they can hit during these situations, and if we, you, we give out too much information, you might be feeding into that system. So, I just would caution...
I understand that, but when 90% of our town is out, I mean, it's pretty reasonable for any criminal to understand that they can go anywhere and try anything at that point, so, I mean, we're looking to get this thing up as fast as we can and calm the residents and have them pre-plan, or even, I know the pre-plan part was important, but pre-planning, even when you're talking about restoration, comes into effect when you're sitting there for two or three days and saying, "All right, do I got to go and move my dog and cat now? Or do I got to do this, and I do, I got to do that?" Things are going to start freezing, so what's the next stage? So, it's not just, how do I, you know, get a shower, or how do I, you know, communicate? It's what's going to happen to my pipes, what's going to happen to the septic system? Is it going to backflow? All these things come into play the longer they're out. So, if somebody knows they're going to be out three days, the most, then they can do something. If somebody knows they're going to be out six days, the most, then they can do something else. That's what I'm trying to get across, really, how long that's going to be to the best of our ability. And I don't know that we did that the last storm, communicated, whether it be us or you or whatever conglomerate of efforts, but we need to do that one thing better, that's all.
I mean, you know, to his point, how hard can it be? You've got four circuits. We're working on circuit one, we're working on circuit two. Four circuits. Come on. That information is easy to communicate to the fire chief, so at least we know. Four circuits.
Because we're going down...
Come on, how hard is that to communicate?
We're going to the shelters, we're the people that are, people to turn to to ask, the fire chief, the police chief, all the, you know...
Right, right. To answer your question, sir, what is the circuit?
I don't know. You told me. You have four major circuits here in town.
No, but I mean, if we're just going to, if we're just saying we're working on this circuit, that doesn't really, that's not going to tell you anything.
What he's asking for is hope.
I know. Absolutely.
Okay? If you tell the fire chief, "We're working on circuit one," okay, and he can say, "They're in town, working on circuit one." You know what? The people in town are going to go, "Thank God, they're here! They're working on circuit one!" It's about, it's about sharing information, okay? I hear you. The whole fear factor thing, fine, the guys with the blue lights, they'll take care of that, okay? "Hey, they're here, they're working on circuit one." I can guarantee you, 25% of the town will go, "They're here!" All right, so that's all we're trying to accomplish.
Instead of 75 to 80% of the town saying to us, "What are you guys doing? They're not here yet. Who's contacting these guys? What are we doing?" Where, you know, it was like that, it really was, so. That's all.
Again, I'd like to say thank you very much for coming today. I know that you guys are realizing that you're coming into Little Big Horn and going to have to listen even three months, two months later, that people are still a little bit upset. One of the things that I thought about during this last outage was, what didn't sit well with me was, and since 1998, as you had shown with the graphic, we've lost power five times, five major outages. During those five outages, I've lost about $2,000 worth of food, as well as work, as well as, and the list will go on, and that's multiplied times everybody else that's out there. And I know you guys are aware of that. But while I was thinking of it, I'm sitting here and thinking, you know what? Five outages since '98? I mean, since 2008? And it's just gotten to the point now where there is a problem. There's a problem. I'll give you a, for example, I'm a weather buff since I was this high, and I can remember storms as vivid as yesterday. I couldn't tell you when my wife and I did certain things, but I can tell you what the weather was like. Just ask her that, she'll tell you, it's true. The point I'm trying to make is, we never lost power like this when I was younger. We just didn't. And the reason we didn't was because there were preventative things in place, you know? One of the reasons I was hoping that you guys could bring, and I know one of the other councils was, too, was hoping that some higher-ups, not you guys, you guys are, you guys are the face, the people that get beaten up for bad service. The point I'm trying to make is, there are a lot of things we can do to work with you to make our situation better, but it also comes down to our senators, our reps, working with PUC to hold them accountable. The problem that we're all running into here is that we're just little pawns, okay? You know, we're sitting here, and National Grid is making fistfuls of dollars from our rates, and that needs to be given back to us, the ratepayers, the people that are paying it, okay? The only thing I want to do is write a check out to PSNH and have my power on when I get home. It's a very simple equation, as it is, for everybody else here, too. Now, we talked about the $14 million that we had, that you guys are putting in for tree trimming. One thing that I'm going to tell you right now, that this won't go away as long as I sit here, we'll work with the town manager. One thing that I'm going to suggest today is that we have an emergency management headquarters opened when we have these kind of storms, and we will address the communication issues. We'll give the residents a place to come to report the issues. We'll force-feed the information to you if that's what it takes, but the bottom line is, one of the ways that all this goes away is if we start trimming back trees. And nobody can tell me differently. When you sit there and you drive up and down the road, you guys know it. You can't say it, but you know it. Trees are down everywhere. Well, if we, if we did a clear cut back on the main lines even, if it's Mammoth, 102, 28, 128, whatever, if those are cut back and trimmed from the ground to the sky, a lot of these major outages go away. And then you're just dealing with some of the small outages, and then you bring them back up. But then, but you're not going to have this fury of people knocking at your door, trying to, you know, it just, it will go away if this is what we do. So, you guys tell us what you need, we'll give it to you. At least, I can speak for, you know, for myself and from the other counselors. If we need to enact some kind of things to help you out, to, you know, make, give you the ability to do that, then we will. You know? I'll sort through the weeds just as, just as much as any one of these guys will do that, but we need to fix it. I'm tired of the outages. My wife's unemployed right now. I'm with all the other people that would love to go out and get a generator. I've been eyeing this thing on, you know, for months now, since this thing happened, to do it, but I can't. So, I roll the dice and hope that my power doesn't go out again. I got horses, so it's a pain when I don't have water, and I got to go to the, you know, the fire station to see my buddies up there, which isn't bad. But, you know, it gets a little old having, you know, I'm forty-five now, so slick, you know, second five, you know, the five gallon water gets a little old. As it is for everybody else here too.
Could you ask them how many total customers they have, please?
How many total customers?
Yeah.
How many total customers do we have for PSNH?
You mean in Londonderry or total statewide?
In statewide.
Five hundred thousand.
Okay, so, not to bela-, not to belabor this, I really am, from the bottom of my heart, sincere that you guys came out today and are listening to this, okay? Before we open it to the public, I ask all you, please, even when you're feeling emotional, just remember that these people are not the enemies, okay? They're here to listen to our concerns and hopefully they can carry this, as well as our voices, up to people above them so that they hear what we want them to hear, and that's to start listening to our concerns, clean up the trees, get them away from the lines, and hopefully some of these outages, these major outages will start to go away.
Just, just one additional note. I made a comment earlier about portable generator safety.
Yes.
Kind of threw it out there for you guys to offer to comment on that. Do you want to comment on?
That is so important, Tom. We actually have been trying through our newsletters and Mike, your Mike's going to come over and give you some information. We put it in the news, in, excuse me, the bill insert and we, I've actually cut and pasted and sent it to Brookline's EMD and I'd be happy to send it along to Dave. And you guys can put it on your website and, I know the town administrator in Hudson, Steve Malizia, put out a news release and plugged it as much as he could. And they, his code enforcer guys were stopping people and keeping them safe and doing a lot of legwork on it, so it's a huge issue.
I wanted you to comment also about the safety of the, of the pole workers.
It's totally, you're totally right. Backfeeding is huge. Backfeeding issue is huge.
Can you explain what that is and how do you prevent that?
I am going to pass it over to Mark or the line department guys. Doug, can you talk about backfeeding and then Mike?
Absolutely, as far as the backfeeding through the service wire, it actually will backfeed through the transformer and energize that primary line running down the road at a primary voltage, which is life threatening to every one of those line crews that is working out there, so.
Folks, folks, if I may, excuse me, we're going to, what we're going to do is, we're going to open it up to the public, so please write down your questions or hold them in your thoughts and we're going to open it up in a couple of minutes. So if you have any questions, you can do it then. It's going to be, it's, it's kind of difficult trying to control it from out there without a microphone, okay?
Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, you can ask the gentleman to explain the significance of a transfer switch.
Yeah, could you do that, please?
Absolutely. The transfer switch will, at the home, disconnect that generator from the line running back out onto PSNH equipment running down the road. It's vital as far as disconnecting the voltage that is, that is being served to your house through the generator and will prevent that line from becoming re-energized on the line crew that's out working. The line crew does have safety preventative measures that they must employ as they're working to do the repairs, which will help prevent them from that. Understand that the preventive measures that they do could also damage your generator if you turn it on while that equipment is out there. So it is in your best interest to protect yourself and the generator that you've spent all that money on, to have that transfer switch. It will overload your generator if you try to feed out onto the line because it will attempt to serve your neighbors also, so.
So here's, here's a question maybe that you can bring back to the higher-ups. Is there a rebate to the electrical rate? And this is not a joke, this is an actual question. If we do in fact have a transfer switch installed, and by the way, I do have a transfer switch and it was very expensive, not only to buy, but also to have it installed additionally, it's an additional expense for electrician to, to do that. It's another, another add, 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 add as your tool generator. So maybe a thought process might be, because it's going to help the safety and it's going to help the, the whole, the whole, the whole aspect of people going out there trying to serve their, their, their own homes. Maybe there's a rebate program that you could develop that will help defray the cost of that, so that it's this way, you know, encouraging people to actually have them. I mean, because, let's face it, I mean, as Sean alluded to, you know, when you get a generator, you get a generator and now you have it and you want to get it hooked up as fast as possible. Well, when you get the generator, the public know, if you don't already, if you haven't tried to do it, first you get the generator and you have to have the dig, you have to dig, you have to get a permit for those things. You have to get gas out there, you have to have a permit for that, you have to have a permit, you have to have an electrician come out, you have to have a permit for that. So a lot of things that, for safety reasons, but it's also a cost addition. And then adding the, adding the switch, the automatic switch is another cost. So when you're looking at, how do I get this thing up and running the most efficient way financially that I can, sometimes that switch, and people have told me that, kind of gets pushed to the side. I think that's, I think what Council Dolan's concerned about too, is that, you know, we're, we're just trying to figure out how to get our, how's, how's, houses energized and if you're on a fixed income like most of us are, it's going to be a problem. I was just very, had a, the ability to put it on a charge card, which isn't the right way to do it, obviously, but at the same time, at least I have a little bit of power in the house when this goes out, so.
Just to comment on the rebate program suggestion, that is something that was raised and is being discussed and I, I think going forward will be looked at because we're regulated utility, there are four other, three other utilities in the state. It may be something that the PUC and the legislature, maybe they have to be the ones to initiate that, so there's a broader program in place that all customers have access to. But I think it's an idea that has merit and deserves.
Rebate for the switch or rebate for the whole generator?
That's a decision that I think needs to be discussed and figured out, but I know there has been some discussion about that idea. We held a series of legislative outreach meetings in, across the state to discuss the storm and, and the, the response to it and that came up at, I know the one I was at and several others where, you know, legislators were interested in talking about that and bringing that concept to the PUC.
They, excuse me, Joe, they, they also brought up perhaps a way for the utilities to finance the generator and allow the, the customers to pay back on a monthly basis through their electric bill, so.
It's a big jump, I mean.
Yes.
You know, fourteen thousand, fourteen thou, I got a fourteen K. It costs me $3,000 and about $3,000 to install.
Yes.
And, and that means the electrician and the gas and everything and then another, that, that power, just so everybody also knows, that power outage itself, that one power outage that I had on for four days cost me $650 for propane, just for that four days. So obviously the way to go is not to, to power your house for, you know, that type of energy, but.
Yes.
Yeah, the other thing was is that, I don't know if we've already talked about this, but really quick, I wanted to make sure, because I didn't understand this. So for layman's terms, basically the switch, power comes in from your line and it, basically the, it basically says, okay, you don't have any more power and then the generator kicks on. When the generator kicks on, it's going to then energize your, your panel. So what you don't want to have happen is you don't want to have something that just goes directly into it. You want to have that switch to be able to, to tell the generator, yep, power's coming in, okay, switch on and off. Because if you energize the panel, at the same time the power's coming back on, you're going to blow everything up. So the point, point of the panel is, is really just to automatically, so you don't have to go out there and shut things off manually and go, uh-oh, power's coming back on, my neighbor's up, run, run outside real fast and shut your generator on, on or off. This detects the power coming in and it switches it right as soon as it detects it within an instantaneous moment, so that the power's not coming two different ways. So a simple way to describe it, I guess. So hopefully people understand that it is very, very important, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, if I could make one more point on generator safety. There is a significant amount of information on generator safety on our website and during the lead-up to a storm, whenever we're issuing public statements and during a storm, when we're issuing media statements and talking to the press, we always encourage people to go to that website and consult that information on generator safety. And now's probably the best time to do it because we're not in a storm situation, so they have access to it. So I would encourage those in the audience and those listening at home to, to please check into that because there is a, a lot of good safety information there and really the bottom line is, is to, to seek the help of a professional electrician when you're doing a lot of this work, to make sure it's done correctly and safely.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks, guys. Okay, we're going to open it to the public, so, hold on one second. I'm going to need a space for people to sit, so if I can, yeah, I guess we'll do it over there. You guys can stay there. Thank you. Okay. I guess what we should try to do is if you have a question, why don't we have that front row and just kind of line up that way and one up, one down? Thank you. And then for the record, please, your name and your address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony Di Francesco, One Cheshire Court. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to the council for, for giving us the opportunity to, to blow off some steam and Council Green, great visual with the people running around with their hair on fire, just, that knocked me out, so thanks for that. So I have a few comments that I want to make and a few questions. Starting with a little history lesson, in eighteen sixty-one, the telegraph replaced the Pony Express. At that time, the delivery system was, you stick a pole in the ground and you put a wire on top of it. Fast forward a hundred and fifty years and our delivery system is, you stick a pole in the ground and you put a wire across the top of it. Kind of crazy. A lot of things have happened in a hundred and fifty years, apparently not for power transmission. The airplane was invented, the pop-up toaster, microwave ovens, photocopiers, that, that computer thing, the internet that no one thought was going to last. Interesting, just to keep in the back of your mind, a hundred and fifty years, same process. Yeah, we can do underground and a lot of other things have happened, but in totality, put a pole in the ground, put a wire on the top of it, a hundred and fifty years, kind of crazy. The, the, we're still, we're still relying on that same system in a lot of other ways too. To hear today that you're still using a ticket system and phone calls in because your computer system registers the phone call and knows where that house is, is, is so arcane, it just doesn't make any sense in 2012. To say that, that you haven't worked on or you're starting to work on changing that system shows that you're behind. To have, to have the chairman or president or, I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't know his exact title, but the head of Public Service Company of New Hampshire go on WMUR TV in studio as a planned event and to say for this last storm that you all were surprised at the event is crazy. And that tape is still available in the WMUR archives if you want to look at it. I just looked at it again last night to make sure that I had my facts correct. Because everybody else in the nation knew this was going to be a huge event. Everybody in the nation knew that this was going to be a huge event weeks in advance. The weather people are wrong most of the time. In this case, they were not. And I think it's unconscionable for the head of your organization to go on the state TV station and say that. Makes no sense to me. There was also mention of clearing public ways and whatever, and this may or may not be a public service issue. It could be a state DOT issue, I'm not really sure. But in this last event, four and a half days after the event, a mom van on Mammoth Road South traveling north, so we're south of crossroads, south of the 102 Mammoth Road interchange, traveling north in the travel lane, hit a tree, the tree went through the windshield and halfway through the van. No one was hurt. How is it possible that a tree, and it was down the entire time because I travel that all the time? How is it possible that a tree, four and a half days after the event, was still in the travel lane of one of our major state roads? Maybe, it may be a DOT issue, I'm not sure. I'm bringing it up as a matter of public record. Everyone giggled when you said smart meters, but that, I know for a fact that is such a thing and one of your competitors is using smart meters. I'd like to know why you're not. It certainly makes sense. It certainly is more efficient than someone have to, have to, having to call on the landline where the line is down. You know, I know that is, is an issue. Mr. Farrell made, did some quick math on his smartphone and it made it sound like you had quite a few crews. I wish the math was that simple because actually it takes usually, and I'm, and I'm going to make a supposition here, more than one crew, sometimes takes more than one crew. So you can't divide the simple number of crews into the number of outages or the number of people because it's sometimes two or three or four different crews, a tree crew, a line crew, a, a street crew, you know, whatever. Point taken. So, you know, I think in general, the communication thing also was issued here and I think Council Green makes an excellent point that, that, and one of the other councilors said, I think it was Council Farrell, said that we're looking for hope. And if people, if people can have an idea, even if you give them the worst-case scenario, this is going to be ten days. You're going to be out of power for ten days and you put it back in three days, now you're the hero. That's publicity 101. The kids are learning that at UNH their freshman year. Something to think about, you know, there's, there's, there's three or four ways to, to skin the cat. The other issue that you have is, and I'm going to speak about specifics in my case, I live in south, off of South Mammoth Road, off of Windsor Boulevard and I don't understand, and there's a lot of sections in town where people don't understand how the power works, where it comes from, how it gets there. But if there's contiguous power all up and down Mammoth Road, then the feed going up Windsor, chances are comes from there. And you have Windsor and Maryland and all those streets up there that all have underground power from Mammoth Road up Windsor, it's all underground, has been for a whole bunch of years. Then why is it in all of these storms, and it's been that way for, for every single storm, there's contiguous power on Mammoth Road for days and yet that neighborhood, those neighborhoods, get no power for two to three days after this contiguous power on Mammoth Road? So again, I thank you all for, for providing us the opportunity. I thank the PSNA folk, PSNH folks for showing up. I think you have a lot of work to do. I think your system is arcane and I think it's behind. I think from a technological standpoint, there's just a lot of things that should, should have been happening over the years that haven't happened. And I hope you take this forum seriously and, and you work to try and make people happy because you're basically in the people business. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony.
So just, just as Mr. Di Francesco said, that's an example of when the woman came over and said, hey, you know, this is, this is the problem that we had, it's all underground here. So I don't know, if, all of you guys, when I said that, were all bewildered looking. So if you didn't know about that happening, it's happening and it happens every time we lose power. So that's, that goes to the question, the underground wiring, where I'm real concerned about how we're going forward with underground wiring, if it's actually taking that much longer, if it's going to give us four more days of, of power outage. Thank you.
Hey, man.
Hello.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Hempfield and I live on 6 Lori Lane. I used to live in the Northeast, moved away, came back here two years ago to New Hampshire. And I, like the previous gentleman, we live in an underground power and we were out for five days. I never saw any trucks. I also had very much difficulty accessing any information off my smartphone, my BlackBerry. The only way I could get information out of PSNH was to go to my work thirty minutes away, log on to my desktop and get some very limited information. I understand your concern about safety issues, releasing global information. If you can't release it globally, why can't residents have password website access or phone website access where you can verify that it is who I am? I get that from other businesses that I deal with. And then my question for the town, and I don't know if it's possible, it seems to me since we live in such a forested state. It seems to me, since we live in such a forested state, we can't put all the blame on the utility. The homeowners have to take some responsibility. Can we not have town regulations that state homeowners have to maintain certain access with their arborists or their trees or whatever we want to call it so that we have more ownership in it? Not that I, you know, want to incur additional costs, but if I'm part of the problem, I think I need to be part of the solution. So it was very frustrating to me. We don't have the generator. We didn't want to spend the power and the money on the switch. But I also don't want to like electrify somebody fixing. And I also want to know what's going on during a storm. I don't want, I want information. If you're going to give me the worst case, that's fine. I don't want you to give me best case, and then it doesn't happen, and then I'm angry. All I saw on the website was by this day, a certain percentage of customers would be restored, and by this day, another percentage. I happened to have been at the back end. So I was very disappointed, living in an underground power line neighborhood to be that long. And then the last thing, you stated in your presentation that the first thing you do is clear roads. I live off of Hall Road, which is not a major thoroughfare, but we had trees down and lines down in the road for at least four to five days before they were cleared. So I think there's some flaw in how you're communicating that that's the first step you do. That was not cleared timely, based on what I was seeing. But thank you. Appreciate the time, and I'm sorry if I ramble.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one quick comment of that as we're switching. I did want to just say that, you know, when she brought up the self-preservation of your own home and the wiring and everything, just to throw that out there. It cost me $250 to get one limb cut off of a power line. And when they had to call the PSNH first to let them know because they felt it was going to break the power line. Again, I'm going down this road, but maybe there's a, it's power and numbers. There's all these residents out there and all these tree-cutting companies out there. If we're willing to fit the bill for you guys to help maintain those, okay? Maybe it's, there's some kind of a credit on the power line. Because if you guys, and I understand that we're responsible for the line that comes into our property, but again, it's just one more headache that you're going to have, one more call you're going to have, one more thing that you need to deal with. So if there's a way that we can have, I'm not asking to pay for the whole thing, but if we, you know, 30% or something like that, it would initiate the person to kind of say, you know what, maybe I can do it then, and I don't have to worry, you know, I'm not going to have to worry. And just a thought to your comment.
Okay, thank you. Dave, one thing I was, what I'm hearing, I did see the same thing because I was obviously away from work for a few days. And is that our responsibility? Are we not getting some of these roads cleaned up? Or are we waiting for PSNH to do that? Depending on the situation.
Yanos can help me, but if there are trees down and no power lines involved, remove those immediately.
Right.
If there are power lines down, we wait for guidance from Public Service and permission to remove those.
Okay.
That's correct. If there is a line on a tree, we don't touch it. We wait for power.
All right. Thanks, Yanos. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. I think what we're going to do for the council, I'd like to kind of keep it flowing with residents and keep the council, you know, just let the residents ask their questions. And if it's something PSNH can answer, that would be great.
Sorry.
It's okay. I just want to try and keep it flowing.
Hello, my name is Rich Urban. I'm on High Range Road just south of Shasta. It's where the main transmission lines cross High Range Road. It's the high tension. Two issues I want to address, communication and hardware upgrades, both of which we talked about in this meeting. In my particular case, with the past four storms, when I call in during the restoration process, your call center is totally inundated with everybody trying to get through. So when I leave the message, nothing happens. And this has been true each time in my situation. The last issue, I made six calls during the restoration process that our neighborhood still had no power while a quarter mile up the street, they already had power. I had to go out and physically grab a crew that was up the road, bring the supervisor over, and explain to them what the problem was. Now getting to the hardware, so the communication issue there needs to be, at least in our area, needs to be looked at. The hardware upgrades I'm referring to is the issue that occurred was the same transformer, all four times, had kicked out because a branch that was more than 15 feet above the transformer had fallen. It was an old-style transformer. The branch crossed the two taps that are on it, and it knocked it out, blew the fuse. The problem with the hardware upgrade is the line crew said, oh, you're okay. We have power on the overhead. They never did a check of that individual transformer. There's no indication on the transformer, no lights, no power signal or whatever. There must be some hardware upgrade to show the crews, yeah, you've got power overhead, but your individual transformer does not. That's the only things I wanted to address.
That's a good point.
Thank you all for coming today. I'm Maureen Comfort. I live at 14 St. Andrews Way in the Forest Hills of Londonderry Community, which is an over 55 community. The point that the gentleman just made about the transformers is one that's, that has occurred to me several times. Why isn't there some indication when a transformer is going to blow? Because that seems to be an issue with power outages. A lot of times, we've been told it's been because of a blown transformer. So I would think that that upgrade's certainly in order. I also feel that perhaps PSNH has not kept up with the exponential growth of the population in southern New Hampshire. We have, we've been here for about eight years, but I've seen considerable growth. And I wonder about the infrastructure, if it's robust enough to handle all the additional population. I also, there was a lot of coverage today about the major storm in October. But there was also an outage on November 12. And from my understanding, this was a planned maintenance outage. And I would like to know what the process is for informing customers when there is a planned outage. How do you folks take care of informing us?
Jay, can you answer that?
Typically, you would be notified by, as Mark spoke before, every account has an electrical address. And wherever we are at that point, whatever the electrical address is for the device that needs to be operated to make the repairs, that's how we would notify the customers, based on, through a mailing, at least 10 days in advance.
Well, we had no information about that outage.
I'm not aware of a planned outage in your area?
Well, I have not been able to find out why we were out of power for five hours on that Saturday, except for sort of hearsay that I hear from a couple of residents in my community that it was a planned outage. And I haven't been able to find out how they found out it was a planned outage. But we, our particular home, we had no notification about it.
On that date, it was not a planned outage. It was a step transformer failure.
What's a step transformer, Jay?
It takes a voltage from, in that particular case, takes it from 20,000 volts and knocks it down to seven to feed that area. So it's not, like, there's transformers that feed your house that take the primary voltage and knock it down to a secondary voltage. We also have transformers on the line that take the voltage from one primary voltage to another, whether it be up or down. So...
But you didn't know that this was happening, that you were stepping the...
No, no, we didn't know that it was going to fail. We know that we're stepping the voltage down.
That gets back to the question of why aren't transformers, you know, sort of, they have some sort of integral way of letting you know that they're on their way to fail or are, you know, producing electricity in the way they should be, I guess. It seems to me that it might be, they may need upgrading. But I...
I understand, but there's really no way to know when something is going to fail. And it just happens in a split second. When something shorts out, it no longer works. And, you know, until the crew gets out there to repair it, your power unfortunately will not be restored until it's repaired.
Okay. So that's, I mean, as I said, I thought this was something that was planned, and we were never notified, and that was frustrating. The conversation about communication to PSNH. A resident in my community tells me, this has not happened to me, but this apparently has happened to this person. If he is the first caller to PSNH about an outage, he gets the message that if this is not PSNH's fault, then you're going to have to pay for a visit. I mean, how intimidating is that? That's just unconscionable, that you should have that kind of negative feedback from someone who's trying to offer you information.
Yes. History's shown us that, I know the message you're aware of. It's, we're trying to work on that message, trying to smooth it out, make it sound a little bit better. But we, in the past, we've had many customers call us, my power's out, you need to come out. And we used to go out, and it was actually a problem inside their house. So after hours, you can imagine, we have to call one person out to come in, report to the shop, get a truck, go out to the location, and we have to pay that person a minimum of four hours. So we have to have something there. We have to have something to fall back on. Otherwise, we pass that cost on to everybody, and we don't want to do that. The message isn't a great message. We're working on making it more friendly. But unfortunately, we have to combat us doing milkman runs, so to speak. And because we can't work on your equipment, your own equipment in your house.
Oh, right. I understand that. Okay. But that is intimidating.
Yes, I agree.
Let's see. On the tree trimming, is four years really often enough to do maintenance trimming?
The question earlier was, is that a standard clearance zone? And, well, I believe it is a standard clearance zone. Definitely four years is standard within the Northeast and certainly in the East Coast utilities. Any more often, and you might be encouraging the trees to grow faster. That sounds odd, but if you can't afford to fertilize a tree, you trim it, and it will respond by growing. So every four years gives us enough chance to get that clearance zone. Branches grow back into the clearance zone, and then we remove them again. It's one of the beauties of living in New Hampshire is we have so many trees.
Yes, that's true.
And it's a hard thing to get the trees and wires to live in concert without taking a lot of them down and replanting everything with smaller trees. But I believe four years is an industry standard and does work with the climate we have and with the species that we have as far as their growth rates.
Another issue about tree trimming, it was brought up that you have to have permission from, that's not the case in Massachusetts. They come, an electric company in Massachusetts comes and trims trees. We had two huge maples on our property that nobody ever asked us if they could trim them. And they trimmed them often because they did interfere with the power lines. So I guess that would be a question for the council, if there could be some sort of legislation about, you know, we need to trim the trees if they're interfering with the lines. And people can't have a say, yea or nay, about having them trimmed.
That's correct. And Massachusetts and Connecticut, which we also serve as Northeast utilities, all three states have different state laws. It's not up to the utility to determine how we get permission or if we need to get permission. It's determined by the state.
By the state.
Wasn't that only in a scenic, scenic street?
No.
You're talking about private, right?
Yes, there were two, we had two huge maples, and nobody ever asked us about trimming them. They just came and did it.
I've been doing this for 25 years. And when I first started doing it for the utility company, I was a permission person, knocking on doors. That role has gradually decreased as states have asked for this type of legislation to be, and citizens have asked for this type of legislation to be enacted. And we have less knocking on doors and more just trim the trees.
Just going ahead and doing it.
You know, and as we said earlier, a million dollars of our budget is spent on gaining permission. And it seems we could trim a lot of trees with that million dollars.
But when you get to that point where you're asking permission and the property owner denies you permission?
Yes.
What's your next step?
Well, in all three states that we cover, there's three different state laws for that. But in New Hampshire, we can come to the town council and ask if we can get permission to trim.
I've been on the council for a long time. I don't ever remember that happening. Is that...
That law went into effect in September 14th of 2009, that we could ask the town council for that.
I guess I would encourage you to do more of that because I don't think we've done that yet in this. David, you get any requests?
One of the things about permission, if I could just say, we get about 98% of the people that we ask say you can trim, but only about 90% say you can trim to those specifications. So people are saying, yeah, trim, but don't only take this much. Sure. You know, and it becomes an issue for us because one tree in a heavily populated area can cause a problem. If we didn't get full clearance on that one tree, that becomes an issue.
My suggestion is, don't take the no as a stop.
Okay.
I think, given the current environment that we're experiencing, that I think we would certainly be willing to intervene and see what we could do to convince the property owner.
I really appreciate that.
You don't have a utility easement over the person's property where your wires cross?
In some cases, we do. Some cases, we don't.
Isn't that your permission? You go on a utility easement?
If there's an easement, yes.
Let's see. The other concern I have is, I'm wondering if PSNH appreciates, and I think one of the council members brought this up, appreciates the financial burden on customers when there are extended power outages. We lose freezers full of food, house plants die. We have to purchase food, hot food outside, which probably isn't in our fixed income budgets. After two or three days, you need to travel to wherever your closest relative is. In my case, it's a three-hour round trip because you're freezing cold and you can't cook. I remember calling after this, after the October storm to ask about credits to our, to our next bill. And I was actually treated with disdain, like, oh, no, you know, it's, this doesn't happen. You only pay for what's coming into your house. So I don't think that PSNH appreciates what a financial burden it is on some folks with extended power outages like this. And just as an aside, after, the day after we got our power back after the October storm, I happened to be looking out the window. And not having seen one single PSNH utility truck during that whole time, I look out my window the next day, and there's a PSNH vehicle. And it was the meter reader. So you folks, you folks get the meter readers out there on a timely basis, and we get our bills every single month on time. But I don't think you have the same appreciation for what it costs the individual customer when we have extended outages. So just for what that's worth. One of the things that I think, and this came up again several times today, I think communication at PSNH is severely lacking. And one of the suggestions I would have is that you folks send out a bi-yearly or yearly report as to what's transpired in the past several months in terms of making the infrastructure more robust or upgrading systems or tree... making the infrastructure more robust or upgrading systems or tree trimming activities, that kind of thing. The water company, Penachuck, does this with a yearly water quality report. And I think that would be very helpful if PSNH would, would, you know, respond in kind and, and let its customers know what it's been doing for the past year with, uh, with, uh, the rates that we pay. And I think that should be by mail, by the way, because, uh, I'm in a senior community and frankly, a number of seniors don't have computers and, and even larger number don't tweet. So, you know, if that, if that could be done by mail, that would, uh, that would be helpful. Finally, I would request that PSNH consider making over 55 communities a priority for restoration. There are folks that are, and I'm sure this is true of other over 55 communities. I'm, we're in Forest Hills, but there are others in the town. And the, some of these folks are on oxygen. Folks are on dialysis and need to get out of their, get in their cars and get out of the garage and can't open the doors, kind of thing, when there's no power. So I would, um, I would request that you consider, um, making us, uh, some sort of priority, not necessarily the police and fire, but, uh, a, a, a more priority than, say, the general population who don't have these, um, issues of compromised health. Let's see, a couple of the other things that, um, let's see, system upgrades. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hello there. Oh, this is low. Maria Newman, 26 Addison Road. Um, I've been living in town 14 years and, uh, I would say way back when, 10 years ago, you know, when you had a power outage, it was a couple of hours, you know? And my husband was never home for those power outages, so of course I was doing the fireplace and all that. And that was all fine, 'cause it was only a couple of hours, two, three hours. Now, when we have these major storms coming, it's not, well, we might lose electricity, it's, it's when. It, it, you know, you just know you're gonna lose electricity. It just seems to be the way it is now. So, you know, on a homeowner's, um, responsibility is to prepare for that. And, you know, um, I know that my, my household does. But, you know, being out a day, day and a half, I remember 2008, oh my gosh, that was a week-long thing. Um, and now the last one was a week-long thing for us. And, um, I just think the week-long thing is getting really, really tough. And, and I, and I, I know everybody, most people feel like that. So, um, my, my, the point I want to make, and I'll keep it brief, is getting back to the tree trimming. The, um, uh, to, to, to keep up with the tree trimming. What, you're saying that a million dollars of your budget goes towards knocking on the doors, okay? I'm wondering if in a short-term, um, uh, resolution to that could be that if the town council can think about, um, putting out to the, the homeowners of Londonderry, if you have a problem having your trees cut after the right of way, please, you know, send in your name, address, phone number, whatever, and we'll put you on the no list, okay? And if that hard copy would be available to the proper people of PS, PSNH, um, the tree people, and they're in the neighborhood, they can refer to this hard copy. Oh, this one on such a, such a street, we're on such and such a street. You go alphabetical order to that such and such a street. Oh, here's the no's. Now, I'm not encouraging the no's, 'cause I think as homeowners, our responsibility is to let them do their job, you know? I doubt they're gonna come and cut slews of trees on your property. They're gonna cut what they need to cut. And quite honestly, I just paid $1,700 to take three, four pines out. And that, I did it, it was my responsibility. I knew they were getting old and big and, and I cut them down. They were right by the power lines. And I did my responsibility, okay? And I've cut trees before in the past 14 years. I've spent probably about five grand in cutting trees. My responsibility, and I have no problem with that. Let me tell you, if PSNH came in and cut one of those trees for me and I didn't have to pay for it, I'd be like, woo-hoo. So, I, just, the people in Londonderry need to just open up, you know, get out of the box a little bit and realize that we can't make everything so difficult. So, um, if we had this temporary list of yea and nay, I betcha any amount of money, there'll be very few no's, all right? But there prob- there probably will be some, okay? That would help in the immediate, um, resolution to that. Long-term, I would hope that we could come up with something as a town legally that we can put in place that the homeowner is out of the equation. It, it would have to be fair. It would be many hearings. It, it would be a whole thing. But for now, for 2012 winter season, the rest of the winter season, we could do a simple list, you know? So that, that's my one thing. That would help your one million dollar budget a little bit with the, right?
That would be fantastic.
Right. So now we have a million dollars up, all right? Now, as far as the $14 million budget, okay, I know it sounds like a great number, but unfortunately, 14 million is not enough anymore, right? So I would just say, on a budget standpoint, all right, our town, we're going through the budget process right now, okay? And we are taking every dime we can from wherever to cut to try to make it palatable for our citizens. And the council does a great job, the budget committee, everybody cumulatively works together to do the best job they can. Not everybody agrees with everything, but you have to take from someplace to help someplace else. And I would really hope that the PSNH people and the financial part can really adjust their budgets. And if they have to eliminate a job here to put more towards the tree trimming there, it's gotta be done. I mean, we can't just keep saying, well, you know, we've given more, but it's still not enough. They're gonna have to find, they're gonna have to trim like we trim. They're gonna have to trim fat somewhere. There's gotta be fat somewhere that they can trim to put more towards the tree trimming. So I, I'm hoping that they really, really take that seriously as well, so. Though, you know, that, those are, you know, my main comments. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
So if we can share a little numbers on the tree trimming, we did a little math while we were all talking. $14 million against 500,000 customers is $28 a customer. Okay? So that's, on my electric bill, that's 1% of my electric bill for the year. So 99% is going someplace else. On your old budget of 8 million, it's half a percent or $16 a customer. And doing a little searching around on the internet with some passwords I have, let's just say that Mr. Wong makes a lot more than $28 million a year. There's multiple senior executives in the six and seven-figure range at Northeast Utilities and PSNH. $28 in a lot of money.
And I know you guys aren't.
And it's not you. I didn't, I didn't say any of your names. I said Mr. Wong.
Anyway, go ahead, sir.
Uh, John Loker, 34 Parmenter Road. Since the, uh, the storm in 2010, well, actually going back to 2009, we've had four power outages. The winter-type storms, uh, each one was six days in duration. The summer event, the tropical storm, was two and a half days. The last storm, the October storm, um, that was a six-day event. When our street lost power, we also had a tree that took down the lines coming into the house, or partially took them down. On Monday morning, I called PSNH and said, "We had lines down and we were concerned about that." And I said, "Well, we'll take note of it." Thursday afternoon, nobody had come. Late Thursday, oh, I think it was around 4:30, the power came on. Unfortunately, it came on with a surge. 'Cause I noticed things popping, uh, lights were twice as bright as they should be. I went off and tried to shut everything off as I fit, quick as I could. I called PSNH twice that night telling them of what had happened. And they'll say, "Well, we'll make note of it." Friday afternoon at 4:30, they still hadn't come. And I was concerned because I didn't know how much damage to property, our personal property in the house we had. And it was very frustrating, uh, not knowing. Finally, about 6:30 on Friday night, five trucks appeared on Parmenter Road in front of my house. They did fix the line. One question I have in, um, items of power surges, do we as individual homeowners have any recourse with the electric company to, uh, be reimbursed? I have checked with my insurance company and of course, coverages would be provided there, but I also have a $500 deductible. What I'm looking at between, in these four storms, I'm looking at over $2,000 out of pocket that were not covered by insurance. Three separate times, we've had tree people come out to enhance and to protect our property and also the lines coming into the house. Uh, like Maria said, we have spent over $6,000 out of our pocket to try to protect our property and also the lines as well. Okay, first question is, do we have any recourse as far as being reversed, reimbursed by, uh, PSNH?
On the website, there is access to our, uh, the tariff for the public service company of New Hampshire. And in that tariff, um, it, there is some language in there that you can read as far as, what causes you would be responsible for and what causes the company would be responsible for. And I would encourage, um, you know, if, if that's the case, I would say to, uh, you know, call customer service and let them know what your concern is and they'll direct your call in the right direction.
To that, John, I would add that if, if we were negligent, we would pay.
Well, um, what is negligence in this case? I reported at 10:30 on Monday morning. You came out on Friday evening. Is that negligence?
That's why, that's why, uh, we would wanna, hopefully we have your information. We would wanna investigate that particular situation.
So to, my recourse is to call customer service and, or perhaps go on the, the website first and then call customer service to see what they have to say.
We will, uh, Jay, we can take care of getting him the information he needs, right?
I'm on the site map right now. You gotta give him better information. I'm looking and I can't find it. There's, there's 300 items on the site map.
John, we'll take, we'll get you the information. We'll get you the, uh, proper forms to be filled out and we'll work with you.
Should I, I see you afterwards?
Jay?
Jay.
We have, we have your address. Jay will contact you, uh, next week.
Okay. Uh, just two very quick things. We're talking about underground wires and tree trimming. A street next to mine, it's off Parmenter, is called Rebecca. In the last, I say, two to three weeks, the lines there are underground. All the pine trees on that road have been cut down. There's a cul-de-sac at the end, the mound of earth that had trees on. All the trees have been removed. Now, this is a road where the lines are underground. Why was attention given to those trees? Where I know there are trees on Parmenter Road, there's a dead one on the property next to mine that's just waiting to come down that would have major impact on the wires, and that's still standing. I don't understand why those trees were taken down in that case. And I don't know whether that was PSNH or the town itself.
We generally would not take down trees in an underground area, so.
Well, you got your first case.
We'll take a look at it. And what, what was the street? Parmenter Street?
No, that's, it's Rebecca.
Okay. Thank you.
And, uh, my last quick question is, uh, I think Joe was talking about setting up an emergency headquarters here for the future. My question is, and I know, I assume because of the police department and because of the schools, this is a high priority area and would get, uh, service restored quickly. Does the town itself, does this building have its own generator supply?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It also, this room is also open and will make everybody aware of it. It also does have Wi-Fi, so that you also have internet access in here.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
We're gonna be going into that. That, that's something that we're gonna be talking about. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I, um, Chairman, I know we said we don't wanna interrupt, but he has some information about a tree that possibly could cause a issue with PSNH, in his opinion? I'm wondering if that's something you guys can also follow up with, because this is the type of information we want, right? You're talking about, you know?
Yes, ma'am, sorry. He's, they're dealing one-on-one. Go ahead.
My name is Marion Batchy and I live on Old Nashua Road here in Londonderry. And I only ha- I, I thank you for allowing us to come. I do have a question. I come from New York. I have been here about eight years and we love it. But I have a lot of relatives up there that I have been talking to about the electricity and energy and stuff. And the state of New York is totally deregulated. When is that gonna happen up here? Is that a good question?
It's a great question.
That's- Because the next guy in line could talk to that one.
Huh?
Next guy in line could probably-
State legislators would know.
And?
Sharon, you wanna take that one? About deregulation?
Deregulation.
You would have to have a piece of legislation come in to deregulate the utility.
Really?
Yeah. Because right now, it is a regulated-
State, right.
Yeah, it's regulated by the state, so we, you would have to have a piece of legislation come in that would completely deregulate the whole thing.
And who do you have to go to for that?
Well, you have-
The state?
You have nine state representatives and a state senator. This is an idea that you have. As a constituent, um, our job is to listen to our constituents and if you wanted to file a bill, that's what you do.
People at home can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Tom was just tapping me and saying, "They're not gonna be able to hear your question, your answers." That's okay.
The question was asked about deregulation of the utility. I was having a conversation with Sean out in the hallway. The legislature, the state legislature regulates the utilities and also the PUC. In order to get it completely deregulated, you would have to have a legislative act being a bill that was passed that would actually deregulate, uh, the industry here in New Hampshire.
Okay.
And, um, how does that happen? As I said, you have nine state representatives and a state senator. Our job is to be responsive to the wishes and the needs of our constituents. And if you felt that that was appropriate, um, I know that, uh, in the next upcoming legislative session, because it is too late to file a bill, um, that your legislators should work with you to get a bill, to actually have a bill and have a public hearing on the issue.
Okay. Good point. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Lucille Door and I live at 142 Mammoth Road. And, uh, I wanna thank you for this workshop and the opportunity to get information. What I want to address is the communication. Every time I called to report the, the outage, I was always asked if I, they could call me after midnight if the power was on, and I always agreed, 'cause I tried to be cooperative. What happened on, on Wednesday, they were out in front of my house. And I thought, oh, the power's gonna go on and, and then they left. And I looked to the left and the right and directly across from me, and all those people were on. So I immediately called the power company again to report the outage. And I did this on Thursday and Thursday night and Friday and Friday night and Saturday. And all I got was the recordings. And finally, two hours after the shelter closed, I finally got someone at 2 o'clock, a human being. And his response was, gee, it's up in your area. Are your power lines down? And I said, "Not to my knowledge, unless they just got loose or something." So about two hours later, some wonderful guys from Georgia came and they, they went and they said, "No, your, your wires are fine." And eventually I got my power turned on. But, I mean, it was just so frustrating, being the only one and getting these recordings. You know, I mean, I was so delighted. Once I got a person, I got some answers and some actions and, and, you know, I mean, it was just, the recordings are just so frustrating. I mean, if I'm willing to be called after midnight to, and I would be thanking you for the power on. I mean, I just think that there should be more human communications. That's it.
Yeah, well, just, I can answer you from the council point per view, but we're gonna be- be doing, after this part of it's done, we're, we're gonna be talking about our preparedness, and we're gonna be talking about things that we can do better as a town, as far as trying to communicate for you and with you to PSNH. And we're gonna try and weed through some of these issues, and we'll try to make it better for everybody, so.
My name is Jean LeMire. I live at Fort Chase Road. I am, I would just like to make a couple of comments. When I lose my power now, it's always a multiple-day event. I live on the last road, really on the Wyndham, Londonderry line. I've lost my power multiple times. I lost my power in 1996, because that's the year my son was born. We had to move to Massachusetts for four days. And I subsequently have lost it more than once. And I, I do have some alternate things that I've had to do in order to deal with that. But I just would like to talk a little bit about the ice storm in 2008. I lost my power for nine days. And when the people came to restore my power, I've never had my power restored without the truck coming down the road, so I've always know that I have to wait for a truck before I get my power on. The people were always lovely to me. The people that I talked to online and on the phone were great to me. But having said that, when I went out to speak to the people in 2008, the gentleman told me, he was actually from Connecticut Light and Power, that he thought I was on a bad string. And when I asked him the question about what a bad string was, he said, well, first of all, you're not in a critical area. Secondly, the equipment is relatively old. There's a lot of trees on this string. So I, you know, I, I don't know a lot about this kind of thing, so I, I thought about it for a long time, and I said, well, people have talked about tree trimming, tree cutting. What about actually infrastructure? If I've always lost my power, always for multiple days, shouldn't there be some kind of documentation of that? Shouldn't, I know we talked about smart, you know, smart.
Smart meters?
Smart meters, then I would think that, that the same thing should be said for people. In my situation, you know, if some parts of the south part of town, some of the tree roads, some other places lose their power for multiple days, shouldn't that be something that somebody looks at to determine exactly what the people in those areas' problems are and how that can be addressed? So those were some of the things that I just wanted to kind of ask and address.
We do, you gonna take it, Jay, or?
Depending, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, hopefully, that the field personnel would always be professional in dealing with you. And we do upgrades based on, you know, greater good for the money sort of thing. And in the case, I'm not particularly sure where your residence is, if you have a line extension that goes down your driveway or through your yard that just serves your house.
Well, actually, there's 100 or so homes on this road, and we're, we all have poles. It's all pole-driven. It's not underground lines. But I'm not alone. I'm very close to Mammoth Road. But again, I, I can't remember a time where I lost my power for two hours. It's always two days or more.
There is, they, they do reliability studies. We have an engineering group that works in each division, and they look at aging equipment and that sort of thing. I can follow up with the engineer responsible for, for Derry and see what his thoughts are on that particular area.
As a general rule, I forget the name of the report, but it's three or more. Every area that loses its power circuit that has a power interruption three times or more within a year, our engineering department is, is looking at that circuit to see what we can do to improve. They look at the reasons why the power was out. If it was trees, or if it was equipment failure, things of that nature. So they're constantly studying the circuits and trying not to get you those outages, trying to eliminate those.
Well, again, I appreciate everybody being here, but I would like to also add my voice to the communication. You know, I, it's hard to get information, and probably, we would be best off finding a better way to communicate information, because it does keep people calmed down, you know? I, I talked to somebody at 3:00 in the morning during the ice storm from Public Service of New Hampshire, because, I don't know if you people remember that, but you told the, you told the WMUI you would have everybody's power on by Wednesday, and I didn't get my power on until that Saturday. So people were very kind. I don't want to say that they weren't, but I, but I didn't get any good information about when my problem was going to be addressed. And in the beginning, I certainly understand about schools and fires. I really do understand that I'm not your first priority, but eventually, I have to be your priority. I don't have any power in my house, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dave Lundgren, 21, King John Drive. I feel as though I should be your first priority.
(laughing).
Anyway, comment, a couple of comments. You folks dealt with a major disaster. I thought you did a pretty good job. I think you failed at the maintenance of the lines with regards to your comments, Sean, about growing up in town. I've been here 34 years. Obviously, tree growth has happened. I think it was five years ago that you, you folks came and maintained the lines, and I think you need to do it more often than what you're doing. My next comment is, I think that the emergency director in town failed in his duties of going around the different areas. I, I traveled around the town. There were a lot of trees, specifically one in my road, that prevented any emergency vehicle coming down it to be able to get down. And I think that that definitely should be addressed. But overall, I, I think you guys dealt with a heck of a disaster, and you did the best you could, and thanks for doing it.
Welcome, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Al Baldassal, 41 Hall Road. I'm here actually as two hats. One is a private resident here at Londonderry, and one is your state, state representative, because myself and, like Senator Sharon Carson and some of the other legislators have worked very hard during that storm, going out and about, driving around, contacting town, contacting the chairman, going in to see the firemen. But there's, before I get into some of that there, I'm gonna try to go real quick on some of the things that were touched on. First of all, the PUC, okay, the electric company has just gone to the PUC for a rate hike on us here, here in the state of New Hampshire, or your customers. We're, we're spending a lot of money. You hit it right on the money. We're probably one of the, we spend the most money in the country on electricity here. So I would think that we expect and demand the best service in the country here when it comes to our lines. Now, I was in a conference call here, fortunate with the CEO and myself, Senator Sharon Carson and a few others, talking about the issues on this, during the storm. We were told by the CEO there and their financial officer that they underestimated the storm. They had the 60 crews in the ready position to go, but nobody expected it to be as bad as it was. So the ball was dropped. Then Connecticut, New York, Rhode Island was hit worse, so it took two to three days for us to get crews from around the country, because they worked in those areas. And I respected him doing it, you know, very, being very honest with us on what, what went on. And he said there were crews that coming in in the morning, I think it was on a Wednesday, and we would not expect to see them working until late that afternoon, because they had to come in, drive, park, and sleep, you know, and get rest before they can go. That's why we seen trucks, where if you, I drove around the town, parked in different areas, they come in from Canada, come in from other places in the country, and they were actually resting. So I, that was just to clarify some of that stuff on that there. Now, the FEMA, that question that came up, okay, not the FEMA, but the issues about the rebate, okay, on the, the damages, money's lost, everything else, I think the council needs to bring somebody in from Homeland Security or FEMA. And whenever the governor identifies a state of emergency, there are rules and regulations out there, because I know some people have told me in other parts of the state, they were reimbursed for their losses. Okay, so I'm not sure how that works, but I think maybe we need to get somebody in to explain and how, how that will benefit our residents here in Londonderry, okay, for the many losses we lost. In 2008, after that storm, I thought we fixed everything when we passed the legislation to give PSNH more authority to go and cut these trees. Now, since 2008, or 2009, when it was passed, nobody has ever, at least I've heard, and I've been there five years at the statehouse, has come to us and said, oh, we got a problem. We can't go. The planning boards aren't letting us. We thought this was a fix until this last storm, and it really opened our eyes that we got a problem here. Okay? And it definitely needs to be fixed. But it's not just you, okay? Because our town here dropped the ball on our residents here. And how am I, what do I mean by that? There was a resident that contacted me that called up to the town over a tree on Lawson Farm Road. Well, he went to the Transportation Department, Yanos's Division, then they contacted the police, they contacted the fire department. Nobody knew who was responsible, because Lawson Farm Road, who was out for six days, has electricity lines underground, but yet there was trees in the middle, and nobody cut these trees. That was not your fault. Somebody from the town, knowing that the bus route was getting ready, was running, should have went out there and cut the tree. It took me now to get involved and talk with the chairman of the council and say, listen, they called here, here, and there, they got no luck. You got buses running, the tree still on the road. The next morning, after the buses all ran through, the tree finally got cut. But somebody from the town should have made some type of attempt to either talk to the owner of that tree where it fell in, and if he refused to cut it or get it off the road, then the town should have took the initiative and got it off the road. Same thing with on High Range, same thing on Adams, same thing on other roads where the trees were in the road, but they had nothing to do with the lines. And I believe we, as a town, dropped the ball on that. Now, after the 2008 storm, I was under depression. There was a command center that was gonna be put in place. We were gonna look at the pet issue, everything else in 2008. That's why I, before the conference call, went to the chief of police, because I was told, not the chief of police, the fire department chief, and because I was told there was a command center a while ago was put in place, and the chief of the fire department was running that. So I went to him. Give me a list of all the roads and, that are blocked and where we're having problems with power. The chief, the dispatcher was on the ball. He had a list of every city, every street, everything that was blocked off or what we couldn't use, and I was able to use that data, which Senator Sharon Carson, we had this similar stuff there too, when we did the conference call with the CEO and all the bigwigs for PSNH. So we were able to get some of the streets on there that weren't happening. The chief was faxing stuff. Now, we spent $80,000, I don't know what the salary is in our GIS. We spent another $300,000, $400,000 in software for our GIS. We should have in that command center our maps in the GIS system that we have in place identifying what streets. Our fight, command center should be the focal point for everyone to go to, not to a private site. God love that Londonderry N8s for what they did. But we can't count on a private sector to do that when we should have a command center in place with the lines of communication opened up. Not at the shelter, because it should be whoever's in that command center to go brief the shelter. Just a few areas of what I've seen that's going on. Now, you brought up about the smart meters. We've got a big issues, and that's another subject, with smart meters. There's some communities and other electric companies that are forcing smart meters onto their homes, and the people are very unhappy with it, because they believe their smart meters has taken away their privacy. The electric company knows everything that's going on in that house. So I hate to break their heart, I'm a co-sponsor here in the state that's coming up here, where if you bring smart meters into Londonderry, the residents of Londonderry have the right to opt out of that and not be forced on there. Because when the smart meters come in, your electric bills are gonna go up, because somebody's gotta pay for that high technology. So be prepared, you know, what it's gonna happen with that. That's coming down the road here this year. Okay. Give me a second here. Okay. When you say you didn't see the people around, and I'm gonna use Sean, your house, and some of the other, your neighbors down there, and a veteran who lives up the street from you, who has his medication in refrigerator and had no generator, who was concerned when his power was going on, and there's a few others that are on oxygen. When I contacted Donna Kamatch, God love her, she's probably the best you, PSNH has that keeps us well-informed, okay, is unbelievable, as far as our legislator, because we, if I call your system, which I tried, I got a voicemail. I got, I couldn't talk to nobody. I was getting aggravated. I wanted to smash my phone, because I'm getting beat up by myself, Sharon Carson, from people throughout the town. So I got my phone number for Donna Kamatch, but soon as I called it, she answers, we got answers. And it's a shame that I, as a legislator, can do that when the actual people in the homes that are trying to call, and they're talking to a voicemail, and they can't get no responses, and then three, four, five days later, they find out. We've got to open up this lines of communication somehow, instead of talking to a machine. It is a big issue here on, when this happens. That's basically all I had there, and I've been writing notes as we went along here that's very important. The command center for the town is very, very important. A reactionary disaster, you know, report has to be up to, where people know, call the fire chief. The dispatcher knows, and the fire, and the police chief, where the issues are. If we start going to these personal, private sites and utilizing them, we got a problem. We should be depending on our town. Somebody needs to educate them on tweeting, on, you know, social media, everything, because many of us now get it on the phones. But there's too many seniors in this town that don't have computers. They don't have anything. I mean, we got a lady up the street from here in the 55 and over who's on oxygen, and she was just scared to go home when the power was back on, because she was afraid the aux, power would go back off, because there were supposed to be more winds coming in. So somehow, we've got to better open up this line of communication by the town also to take care of them. Thank you.
Agreed. Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
For the record, I am Sharon Carson. My address is 19 Tokenell Road. Again, Al put into words a lot of the concerns that I heard. I'll tell you that when the power started, went out on Saturday evening, my cell phone started ringing. Constituents call, they want to know when the power's coming back on. And I have to really thank PSNH, because I think they listened to us back in 2008, and they really did some great things this time. I'd like to publicly thank Eric Taylor, who was Londonderry's liaison to their station in Hudson, like Al. We were driving around, I was driving around at nighttime between Auburn, Hudson, and Londonderry, looking at the damage, looking to see what we could do, and I could call him anytime. And there were times I called him 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and he answered the phone, and he listened to my concerns. So we did have a communication system. It was a little informal. I would, Kathy Wagner and Steve Young, who run the website, would get tweets. She would call me, and I'd pass that information on, just because I had a contact. So it kept me pretty busy, and my cellphone bill was a little expensive that month, but that's okay. But I think that there's a, a lot of things that we can do differently, and I think that's a conversation that we, as a town, need to have. One of the points that I wanted to make is that PSNH is regulated by the state, and there are times when the state does tie their hands with different pieces of legislation. And I think that perhaps that is another discussion we can have as a community with our state representatives to look at pieces of legislation that are coming forward and say, okay, how is this going to affect us as a community? And I think that's where we, between the town council, the school board, and other governing bodies of the town, can sit down and have conversations with the state representatives and the state senator. So if a bill does need to be filed, we can do that, and we can do that in a timely manner. Al had brought up the issue of smartphones, and, not smartphones, smart meters, and I had a question. How does that affect the system if you have some people on the smart meter and some people not on the smart meter? Is that going to make the system more efficient, or is that going to be a problem? I knew about the bill. It is a Senate bill that has been filed. So it would be good to have that information when it comes time for me to, to vote. representatives. If you don't think this is a good idea, let us know, too, so we can vote to reflect the wishes of the community. So I'm hoping I can get some answers to that. And PSNH, if you need more ability to cut down some of these trees, don't hesitate to call us or to, give me, give me a call. Have Donna give me a call. I've got her on my cell, too, and we'll put in a bill. But I think we have to be very respectful of private property rights, too, and we need to work with folks. One of the things I would suggest that we could perhaps put up on the website is pictures of what's a dangerous situation and what would be an appropriate cut. So if a property owner does have a tree that's overhanging a wire, how they know, they know what they can do. How can I get this cut if I get it cut privately? Can I call you and have you come out and take a look at this and assess whether or not this is a problem? And I think we all love the trees. We love how they look in the spring, the summer, and fall, but when it comes wintertime and we get into these ice and snow events and they come down, that's when we have big problems. And so I think we need to work together as a community to resolve this issue and to work with PSNH and to use their expertise in this area to do what's best for our community. Because I completely agree, when you have a limb come down on a, on a major line, it affects everybody, and we need to deal with that as a community. We've talked a lot about underground utilities. I'm lucky. I live in a neighborhood that does have underground utilities, but people need to realize at some point, they do go above ground. And that's why people will say, "Well, gee, I have underground utilities. Why do I keep going out?" It's because it has to come up, above ground at some point in time. And I think we need to perhaps educate people a little better about our electrical grid. I know that our senators Shaheen and Ayat have talked to FERC and ISO New England, who really control our grid, to talk about, do we need to make some changes within our grid? And I think that's something Al, as a state legislator, and myself, as a state senator, we are keeping on top of. So when we get that information, we'll be more than happy to relay it to the town so it can be put on a website so people know what's going on with the grid. We've seen a lot of development over the past 20 years, and there are questions about whether or not the grid is adequate to meet the needs of the growing, our growing part of the state, which is the southern tier. So again, we just want to keep the lines of communication open. My email address, my phone number, everything's all out there, so if anybody has any questions, anybody has any concerns, please don't hesitate. Give us a call, and we'll get your, your questions answered.
Sharon.
Sharon, thanks for coming today, by the way.
Sure.
Would it be appropriate for the state to consider legislation to require local communities to adopt ordinances over some period of years to, to require underground utilities in new developments?
That might be a little difficult because we tend to believe a lot in local control, and we can pass a piece of legislation that would enable a community to make that decision, but I think that's probably as far as it would go because, again, we don't want to step on the local communities and require them to do something when, quite frankly, it's something that they can do themselves. So, you know, the municipal association, I think, would be a good place to have that discussion, and I know that they're on top, on top of these types of issues. But I don't really see getting a lot of support for that type of state control over municipalities. I think it would be difficult.
I understand there is a balance there. It just seems that, that if communities are, are not willing to go, take that step, then what that does is that ends up perhaps consuming power company resources to continue to inordinately have to service those communities because their, their lines are all above ground.
I think that there's a heightened awareness of that now because of the types of weather events that we've experienced over the past years. And I think that there are municipalities out there that are having this type of discussion for new projects. In fact, I'm sure most people are aware of the Northern Pass, and there's a discussion now about requiring those lines to be underground. So I, I think that, again, there's more of an awareness, but you run into difficulty with the older, the older lines. It's very expensive to do, and as you said, we have the highest electrical rates in the country, and we have to pay for that. Representative Baldessaro and I worked quite closely with the folks in the Springwood neighborhood two years ago because PSNH exercised a right of way, and we learned an awful lot about this process, and it can cost up to 10 times as much, more than just putting up a pole with lines. And you have to ask, who's going to bear that cost? If you're going to do that, PSNH then has to go to the PUC and ask for a rate increase. We all would have to pay for that. So, again, I want people to keep that in mind, that if you're going to require that, it's going to have to be paid for, and the taxpayers will have to incur that cost. So we would see higher rates.
An example here on the state here, I'm just, I'm just projecting the sprinkler bill. An example here on what you just said, on the mandate, on putting it on, is the sprinkler bill. Some people mandated the sprinklers, cities or towns mandated the sprinkler, costing the taxpayer or that owner's a lot of money. We, as legislators there, took that off and said, "You cannot mandate that no more." So for us to even do something like Senator Carson's saying, a mandate underground utilities or enabling legislation, communities will go ahead and put that in, and the rest of the state will go ahead, will be paying for that, because, like she said, PUC will hit everybody, not just that community.
My thought, though, is not to retrofit above-ground lines and bury them. My thought is to bury new developments that are going to have to put lines in anyway, and that way, it would cost the power company, and it would cost the developer and, and the new homeowner, who would be built into the cost of those properties. So the, I don't think it would cost the power company anything to do that.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe you don't have the authority right now to do the ordinance, but you have already worked with many developers that put their lines, and you could do that.
That's why I had said you could get some sort of enabling legislation that would allow towns to, to actually create ordinances to do that. We have to be careful, too, of Article 28A of our constitution, which says if a state mandates, the state has to pay. So if the state mandates that communities put these things underground, the state would have to pay for that. So we have to, we have to be aware of something like that, too. So again, we're here. We're willing to work with you. If you've got some ideas about legislation, we can sit down, we can have a conversation, we can file bills, but be aware that when we do these things, we can, in essence, tie the hands of PSNH to do the things that they need to do. So we've got to try to strike a balance, and I've had a good, a good relationship with PSNH. They're always willing to come to the table and have the discussion, and I think that that's important, that those lines of communications stay open. They've done a terrific job. They've done the best that they can with what they have. Sometimes these events take on a life of their own. We don't, we can't control the weather, unfortunately, and all we can do is the best we can, but as a community, I think we can do better in response to these storms. We need to get our town council, our, our fire and our police, our, and other community leaders together to create an action plan that will go into place immediately, that will alleviate a lot of the confusion, and really educate the citizens on what do you need to do in order to get through an, an event like this. And so we're here. We're willing to work with you and, and move forward at this point and learn from the mistakes of the past. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Yanos?
David Colglazier, Six Moulton. I wonder what prevents PSNH from filing a claim against property owners' insurance policies with regards to damage caused by trees that are under control of the property owner, where they may either damage it or cause some need for PSNH to operate on the lines that are affected by those trees.
Bob, do you want to press that?
It's a great idea. I don't, I don't know how receptive people would be to that, but we.
If I drive into one of your telephone poles.
Yep.
You're going to come after me.
Right. Yep, and there's a.
My tree falls into your equipment. Why aren't you coming after me? What would happen if PSNH were to have their legal department send letters to property owners for their trees that would affect the lines, saying that, "We think that your trees may be in danger, or may be dangerous to our equipment. Please do something about that." And then it would be up to the property owner and the insurance company to perhaps make some judgments about that.
It's a great suggestion, and I'd be more than willing to look into that, see what we can do.
And another thing, is there enough economic value in the standing timber to have somebody come along and take the timber down for you?
That's not my expertise, that part of tree work, logging, and timber, but I think oftentimes in rural, real rural wooded areas, there is some value. As you get more populated areas, sawed timber doesn't become as valuable because they don't know if there's been a nail or a rock or something in the tree as it grew up, a tag sale sign. We have a hard time harvesting more populated areas, the trees that grow there.
Well, I have seen advertisements, but I haven't seen it happen recently, where homeowners in the area where I live have had their property cleared with trees where people come in and say, "We'll cut them for free."
Right.
And their yards usually look like heck afterwards, but they still get the trees out of there.
I think you're right there, and I think a lot of times that's used for cordwood value, and that, that's a great idea.
Yeah. And so I go along with Mr. O'Keefe with regards to, I think that some of your vegetative tree limits should be about one foot above the ground, and that way, your cutting cycle would be about every 45 to 50 years.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yanos?
I'm not afraid to follow Al with his comments about town dropping the ball, because I don't believe that this is a correct comment. Town didn't drop any ball when it comes to cleanup, that our crews did. If there are trees somewhere, and maybe what tree, I was just talking to Russ on the phone, if maybe was a tree pushed on the Lawson Farm Road, on the side of the road, the road was not closed, there was, there was, traffic could go by. We don't have 100 parachuters falling down on a town and cleaning everywhere in the same time. It takes sometimes four hours to get 600 feet to clean up the road. With 11 people, you can't do that. So we didn't drop the ball. We did the best we could go do with our crews, and we, also in competition for every contractor available in the area, because every town and all around the state was the same. So you can't have contractors coming down and helping you next day on the same day. So everybody got as much as they could. So we have to take, also understand that Mother Nature put this on us. And you can't cut all the trees 60, 100 feet because we will not have any trees. You don't cut the tree around your house 150 feet around or 200 feet because maybe 60-foot tree one day will fall on your roof. So this is not something that can be done as everybody thinks that can be cut that much. If we want to cut the dead trees, we're being called eco-killers because people do not want to cut. But you also cannot cut in a radius of 200 feet because if the 100-foot tree can go across the street. And in this kind of situation with a Mother Nature came like this, you can predict as much as you think you can. But comment that town dropped the ball on cleaning, it's very unfair to our crews and our department. And that we did not provide the information when the information was provided all the time, every day by the town, to the, to the public, on the websites, what trees are closed, what streets are not cleaned up, and everything else.
I'll agree to disagree, and I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yanos, you really should do more with less. I mean, fix the roads, take care of everything. Why don't you do more?
Could I talk about the budget next? Next budget meeting, I'll ask for that.
For who? Oh, okay. Okay. So that pretty much wraps up that. We had a couple more questions. I think Tom had a question for PSNH. Bring it back to you guys, I guess.
This might be a question for Jay. I think he seems to be the one with the most local knowledge of the Londonderry, if that's, if that's appropriate. Along Stonehenge Road, which is a connector from Mammoth Road to Route 28, right to the immediate, middle of the, of the community, on the south side of that road, that used to be a huge potato farm many years ago, it was open, open fields. It's become now overgrown, and someone commented was, the farming community is now, it's been reforested. In, in through the south side of that road, there are electrical lines on poles. Are those live lines or those, are those lines dead at this point? Can, do you know from your knowledge of the community?
Excuse me. There are, we, we have two feeds into, two distribution feeds into Stonehenge Road, one from Mammoth and one from Rockingham Road. The specific area you're talking about, I'm not familiar with. Is it like southeast of the overpass or northwest of the overpass, I guess?
It is southwest of the overpass.
Okay, so it's between the overpass and.
Mammoth.
28.
Yeah.
Or the other way.
128.
Okay. There's a section, we, there's a pretty good-sized section that we don't have any overhead wires on, but telephone does. Telephone and cable.
I see.
But we do have, we do have that right-of-way, I wouldn't call it adjacent to it, but if you go almost, you know, where you can see the substation.
It actually crosses Stonehenge, the distribution, right-of-way.
Because if you, if you drive down Stonehenge and you look, if you're headed towards Derry to the east, and you look to your right, that's where the potato farm was. But in, in the, in the tree line, about 50 feet off the road, there are poles, and there are wires. I think there were three or four wires on those poles, and they're, they're relatively low. It's about 15, maybe 20 feet from the ground. So it's, it looks like it's quite a legacy type of design. But there are, those trees that grew up out of that potato farm are now engulfing those poles and those wires, so it doesn't look like there's any trimming activity going along there. I guess that, I would encourage you to take a look at that. Is that, if those are electrical lines, they definitely need some attention.
Is that close to where Perkins Road comes?
Yes.
That is, there's actually, we don't have a section of line in there. That is phone, pretty much phone.
Telephone?
Phone and cable.
Okay.
Through that section.
All right.
As you, as you head from Perkins towards Mammoth.
Right. Those are the lines I'm talking about. They're visual from the, from Stonehenge Road, and you look into the woods.
You have to go about an eighth to a quarter mile before I believe you hit the next, the next home.
Right.
I think that's where we end, as we're, as we feed down from the Mammoth Road section.
So, so if it's not electrical, then it's not been trimmed, so I feel better about that, but.
That's correct. We, that is just a section of phone and cable and maybe a third party.
If you live in that area and you have phone or cable, you're at risk.
They could, yeah, they could contact Fairpoint if, if they wanted those lines trimmed up.
That's a good question. What kind of partnership do you have with telephone company and the cable company to, you know, who does trimming? Do you, do you all throw into a pot and do it together, or do you, you, you do this one, I'll do that one, type of thing?
I can speak to that. Where we have joint ownership of the lines, we do the trimming, and then we bill Fairpoint, and they reimburse us for a portion of that trimming.
Ah, so that leads me to my question. So with that said, I'll jump on that one. I called up right after the snowstorm.
Yep.
And I had concerns expressed to, I think I sent it online. I got a call from somebody, don't remember who. I think they left their name, but they didn't leave a callback number. Lucky for them. And they basically had said that it was not, the lines weren't really being affected by the trees for the PSNH side of it, that you should call, you should contact the telephone company. It's their problem. So basically, what you just told us is that you guys would do the trimming and then.
No, I said on joint ownership, when we jointly own the poles. They sometimes own the poles solely, and then it would be their responsibility.
Well, how about Mammoth Road in Londonderry?
All right, we'll have to take a look at it, if you can give me that.
I can't remember who called me.
Okay.
But they left a message on my phone, and there was no return call, I mean, no return number, so I couldn't call them back and debate it. I did send the, an email to Dave Venting. But the trees are still touching the wires, and it's still an issue.
I'd be glad to take a look at it.
Anyway, it, it also goes pot and parcel with the rest of the road. If you go up and down it, it needs to be, it needs to be heavily trimmed back. And I think that if you do that, like I said back at the beginning, I think that if you go up and down, which it's a state road-
Mm-hmm.
You should be able to go up and down that and clear-cut it. It's a major root power-carrying. I think if you really go through and you really target certain areas and stretches of main cables going through, it's, it's going to benefit the utility. And it's not through the, you know, the small roads and stuff like that, or the scenic byway of Adams Road, which is a whole separate issue. But, again, if you can control that-
Mm-hmm.
I think you're going to win. You know, I know, I think we'll all win.
Can I peel back that question just a little bit? I remember from when Walgreens went in, you don't own every pole on Mammoth Road, do you?
I'm not, I don't have enough knowledge of that.
I'm almost positive you don't, because we had to wait for PSNH to move a pole, then Fairpoint to move a pole.
Right.
So just to, and I'll turn back over to Joe here in a second. So if Fairpoint owns the pole, and you don't, you don't trim it?
So then this discussion-
Well, I peel back the question.
Right. I hate to say that as an absolute, because we will trim some cases where Fairpoint owns the pole.
Okay. Does Fairpoint do trimming?
They do at a very limited level.
Okay, so if Fairpoint owns like three or four poles in a row-
Mm-hmm.
They're going to do a very limited trimming. And then you own the next three or four, you're going to do a heavier trimming job, but you're not going to do Fairpoint's, because it's not joint ownership.
If we have primary lines there, we would still be-
If you have lines on their pole, even if they own it, you're going to trim it.
We would trim out the circuit, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that just covered my question, because basically that answers my question, which it wasn't done. You guys, or your agent, passed the buck, and said, "It's not our problem, call the phone company." And I'm like, "The hell I'm going to do that."
Well, we wouldn't trim, we wouldn't trim that if it wasn't affecting our electric lines, though, would we?
That's correct.
Only when we trimmed on the maintenance, we wouldn't trim it, no.
Right.
If it was on the wires, is that the situation we're talking about?
It's all over it, it's growing around it.
Okay, and our wires are above the phone wires, so-
Yes.
So we wouldn't have a reason to trim it if it's on the phone wires, not on our wires.
Don't you rent space to that? Don't you rent the pole to Fairpoint on a lot of occasions?
No, in, in Londonderry, on the poles-
Any utility, I mean, you know, if, whatever company is there, if you're the first one that puts a pole up, and there's room to put some cable wire on it, you're not doing it for free, I imagine, out of the goodness of PSNH's heart. You're getting something out of it, right?
In Londonderry, the, the poles that are going to be used by the phone company and the power company are installed by Fairpoint. We have a joint, we're joint owners, and-
So that's your deal, you're a joint owner.
We're a joint owner, with the poles that we're both attached to. And as far as the maintenance portion of installing new ones or replacing them, in the town of Londonderry, Fairpoint does the pole installations.
But they're not doing the maintenance. That's a fair statement.
And, and I can't speak to what Fairpoint calls.
It, it sounds like a tangle.
Yeah. It sounds like a fair statement.
It gets muddy.
Yeah. Clear as mud, right?
Yeah. I have someone else.
Sure.
But I guess, just before we go further on Sean's question, just want to clarify that just because it's a main road doesn't mean that it's a main distribution for us. In the case where you go down by crossroads, south, the main line does go down Kendall Pond, and not Mammoth from there. So that is actually what would be called a side tap.
Well, I can, yeah, I can never understand my own personal is, I'm, and I lay into butts Walgreens, they had power day two, you know, and I'm sitting there going, hmm.
Look at the poles.
Pretty much, yeah.
And Kendall Pond was there before that. And that's part of the problem.
That's right.
So, actually, as people were speaking, I had written down a few questions, so I'll try to go through them quickly. I think they're pretty relevant, though. On the, and this is not a joke, actually, this is a question that I've heard more than once. When we have a power outage, major power outage that lasts more than two or three days, why are our power bills never lower? They seem to be the same. I would think a significant, in one month, one-fourth of our power is gone, you would see, you would see a dip in the power charge. But that's never, that doesn't come to fruition to a lot of the bills, so.
The only, the only way I can really address that, Joe, is to say that if the power's off, we're not metering any usage. So it's, it's being used at some point.
There's several portions of your, your power bill that comes every month. Your energy charge is calculated based on how much energy you use, and there are other portions that are based upon how many kilowatt-hours you use each month. So when you're out of power, you're not accruing billing on those parts of your bill that are based upon how much energy you use.
What part are we accruing?
There's one part that's a customer charge, that that's a standard charge, it doesn't change on a month-to-month basis.
Well, no offense, but why am I getting a standard, flat charge for something you're not delivering to me?
Well, it, I can, I can provide you with a copy of the bill and the explanation of what each of those portions go to-
No, I, I can read the bill, too, I understand that.
But the customer-
What I'm saying is, just theoretically, if you're not sending me electricity, why am I paying the, you know, the, the fixed cost?
And this is, this is where the, our bill is probably one of the most heavily, heavily regulated portions of what we do. So the PUC standardizes what all utilities do in terms of how they charge their customers. So, that customer charge covers a very specific bucket of costs, that, for the reasons that the PUC has decided, that is what customers pay regardless of how much energy they're using. The other parts of your bill are based solely, are controlled by you, and how much energy you're using.
I can confirm that. I have a, I have a seasonal property upstate where the main breaker is off the six months of the year, and I still get an electric bill every month, or, I'm not consuming any electricity, I'm still getting it.
But it's your choice not to consume it, then. It's not my choice when the-
But there are still fixed costs associated with us being-
He's still getting billed when his power's off. I, no, I know.
The reason why there's still that customer charge is regardless of whether you're using energy or not, there's still fixed costs associated with us building, maintaining, and providing the opportunity to provide you with power.
Right. But, but, see, my problem is this, is when you heard people come here and say, you know, "I lost, you know, a week's worth, or two thousand dollars' worth of food," that's their fixed cost, too. And you absolutely have no qualms about saying, "Oh, that's not our problem, we're not rebating it," or anything like that. And, and, you know, and, and I'm sure in the, in the tariff that you, you spoke of, there's probably some notice that says, "Unless you give me photographs of the food you're throwing out within twelve minutes of its occurrence," you know, "You've waived your rights forever suing the P, PSNH," you know. So, you know, the fact is, you, you might have some procedure there, but, you know, I might as well go to the world court to get justice, because I ain't going to get my, you know, my two thousand bucks back for the food. So, I, I got a real problem when you're sending me a charge for fixed costs when I'm not able to get electricity that's not due to me, it's due to your wires going down, but you won't rebate me my, my losses. I mean, you know, fair's fair here.
Well, well stated. I just, that being separate to what my question was, I'll, I'll kind of reiterate what I was talking about. So if my bill is six hundred dollars a month, okay, when the power outage happened, I got a bill after the power outage for six hundred dollars a month. So we're not talking about twenty-five, or thirty, or fifty-dollar usage fee, or whatever that is, we're talking about, and I'm not the only one, I'm surprised, you guys all look kind of a little bewildered that I always said that. I'm telling you, there's tons of people that that's happening to.
Happened to me.
So, that, that doesn't make any sense logically. So if you can tell me that it's this charge and that charge, I, I don't understand why it would be the same, so.
We'd, I'd like to get a better sense of your individual situation. I have heard that from, from other customers, and it could be a great number of things. It could be if you were running a different appliance, it could be increased energy usage, it could be whether your meter was red, or whether it was an estimated reading or not for that billing cycle. So there's, there's a whole slew of factors that-
Let me suggest something, because what I'm-
It was an estimated bill, because when it happened, the outage occurred on the, what, twenty-ninth? They didn't have, they didn't have any, any staff going out and reading meters then.
Right. But why didn't they get a savings later on?
So they gave us an estimated bill.
Right.
Just an example, mine was actually less. And my bill's read about the ninth or tenth of the month.
Yeah.
Now, I agree with Tom. I mean, you know, there should be no, they should waive the standard charge. I mean, cable, I got a fifty-dollar rebate, you know, because, you know, they couldn't provide the service.
But John, you might have done something different in your household that I'm trying to get to for other people that come, come to me. Now let me explain to you.
Dude came and read the thing, so it wasn't an estimated bill. So just-
Okay. That, that could be one, but what I'm trying to get to is there, is there a thing, because I know in business, you actually pay for the surge, the initial surge when it comes back, so there's a rate, there's a rate per month that you have, and when you, this may be Massachusetts, I don't know, but when you, when the power comes back on, whatever your demand is, that's what you pay, whatever that demand is, that, that spike in demand, unfortunately, you pay that the entire time on that rate. So that's why they tell you when there's a power outage, at least in my, my stores, we make sure everything is shut down, except for we have to have coolers and all those refrigeration things, items, so that the spike is not as large. I'm wondering, for informational purposes, going out to the public, for TV viewers today, and I see the newspaper's not here, but I'm just trying to, you know, try to understand it a little bit more. Is that maybe what it is, or?
I, I'm not familiar with the, the system you're describing there, that sounds like it's more related to a commercial-
It's commercial.
Yeah, okay, commercial, okay.
Not for a residential home.
Okay.
I can get you some additional information, that there's a, actually, as part of our bill explanation on the website, I can get the actual documents to you. There's a, like, a frequently asked questions that has a whole slew of factors, is it like a twelve-bullet list of different things that it could impact your bill each month in terms of energy usage? And, like I said, there's a whole number of factors, depending on what you're doing, what you're running, and what immediately happened after the storm, and when this billing cycle actually was, so.
So Sean and I, at least up here, are going to wait for you guys to really come and read the meter, so we can get that savings from our one week of power outage, right, Sean? Because I haven't seen it yet, and we've been several bills later, so I'm still waiting for it.
Right. And, you know, the reality is, is that if the billing cycle after this, when it would be made up in, if you were using more energy during that billing cycle, then you probably wouldn't be able to see it very easily. If it got colder and you were running, you know, your furnace, or some other appliance more, because-
And logically, we all know it hasn't been colder, and the weather's been fairly decent, knock on wood, so. Anyway, for the second one, and I'm going to try to go through these quickly. So, some people have brought up the leaps and bounds that we're growing, and the concern with the infrastructure upgrades. And I guess my question is for somebody here, do you feel that the grid, if these are the right terminology, I don't know if they are, can you, do you feel that the grid, the way it is right now with the infrastructure we have, is properly, the use of that grid now is, is still okay for the amount of growth that we have, or?
Yes. Sean, I, Mark and I were just in a meeting, and we've made major, major investments in the transmission system, and the distribution system, and particularly major upgrades. I can't, we don't want to talk about specific names of substations, but in Londonderry.
And how, when were those made?
They're, they were made, for instance, we just met with the transmission department. They mentioned that they invested in the last five years, four hundred million.
Okay, so, so, I appreciate that, thank you for that, but just to let you know that, which, what we're all trying to figure out is why this all-of-a-sudden spike kind of will pass, as Mr. Chairman, the chairman alluded to earlier, is that you see it only happening in, in the past five, or six, or seven years, it seems like, with the growth, and maybe that's just, happens to be that way. It seems like that as the growth is going up, our issues with the amount of people going out is going up as well, so.
Joe, our, our demand has actually gone down for electricity in the past five years. We have, we have not reached our peak demand anybody-
Since two thousand and seven.
Since two thousand and seven.
Interesting.
We're, our, our new service is down considerably since two thousand and seven, so.
Hey, Joe, I'd like to move this along to the latter part, it's getting kind of late.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman-
Yeah.
I have a one o'clock meeting in Derry on veterans issues. Do you have anything else for the legislators, or any questions or concerns on anything coming up? Because-
I think, I think what I was going to recommend, Al, per Sharon's statement, I think one of the things we can do at a later meeting is invite the reps, Senator Carson, and maybe we can craft something better than what we're doing now-
Right.
And then, you know, work with reps at PSNH. I think we're going to work on it that way.
Because we have time, I mean, we can't file any legislation anyways up until, for the next session, because the filing period for the Senate and the reps are already done.
Right.
So we have plenty of time to work on something, in order to make it better for all.
Okay. But, yeah, I think we're good for now, and we'll, we'll have Dave get in touch with you guys when we're ready to sit down again, so.
Yeah, I think we ought to let these people go, there's fifteen hundred people without power in Wyndham right now.
Thank you.
I'm just on your website, I better let them go.
All right. I think we've exhausted our, our time with you guys today. We really do appreciate you coming in. Again, we realize there are a lot of things that you don't control. We're willing to sit down and try to work with you. I was hoping today, I think the whole council was hoping today, that we could, you know, allow the res, allow the residents to come in, express their concerns, and also allow us to do the same, and make you realize that there's a lot of frustration out there, and we're all hearing it, and I'm sure you do, too. You guys live around here, you have neighbors. So, again, we need to do something better than we're doing, because right now it's just not working. So, anyway, thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In this second part of our meeting, we're just going to, I don't want to, we've all been here, it's Saturday, I think that we've all got a lot of ideas that we can cross. I want to entertain the council for brief second part of our meeting, that Dave had brought up. And that was basically, I don't even have it in front of me. Basically, our preparedness from, from the town side of it. And what I would like to look at, from my point, would be the emergency management headquarters. And I wanted to find out the council's appetite to do that, and I know it's going to involve staff, but I also wanted to involve the council. As, as the elected leaders, we should be heavily involved, like, I think we all were during the storm, but I, I would like a place for us to congregate, to be able to compare notes and talk about things. So, any ideas?
First immediate thing is, is, and I think that's a good idea, first immediate thing is, I think we have to not only make the internet available here, but at the shelter.
Okay.
So the, you know, I think we have to work with the schools and make sure the internet's available for people at the shelter. As far as emergency, as far as having a, a headquarters office, I, I don't know where, I don't know where that would be. It could be the conference room of the fire department, I mean, you know, because that's where the fire chief is. You know, I mean, whatever works for the town, works for me.
Dave?
I guess I better need to understand what you're trying to accomplish. We do have an emergency operations center, like John said, in the fire department. What else, what are you trying to accomplish with an emergency management center? Because I think we have one already, so what are we, what responsibilities or tasks are we missing, which we can incorporate in our plan moving forward?
There's, there was, there's been some comments about pets. And I don't know if there's a solution for that, but it's something that probably ought to be at least addressed. If there is no apparent solution, we ought to say that.
Chief, can, the ironic thing is, we were resolving the issue with the pets when the storm actually struck. But do you have any additional information on the status of the pets?
Two things, I mean, the biggest two concerns are about having an emergency operations center, whether it has to be opened or not, or what the requirements are. What we do is, as every disaster comes, we gear up for that disaster, and we put our staff into a mode where we feel. This event, believe it or not, as big as it was and as much power loss as it was, was a small event as far as emergency management is concerned about the initial storm, whereas the ice storm was much more a long-term, a longer-term event. This was about 14 hours of intensity, followed by about six hours of, you know, getting things organized and done. The long term was, yes, the town was out of power for up to seven days, and that had to be managed, but as far as for the town's emergency response to that, the only outcropping of that was the shelter operations for the next five days. And the coordination of information, which was done through the town, through us, which there are two issues, and we will try to resolve some of those. The one thing that came up was the pet shelter issue at the shelter, which I can address on both those. As far as the emergency operations center, we have actually two of them. One that's at the police department training room, that we can open up for a large event where we could have everybody in there making the decisions for that event. For the smaller events, we open up the one at the fire station, and that was staffed by basically three people. Myself, my senior staff, and then the police were in and out, and the DPW was in and out for their portion of it, because those were the three major affected issues for the town in the immediate proportion.
Well, I think what I'm recommending from me, and whether the council wants to entertain that is up to them. But what I'm recommending is that the council, some form of the council should be involved in emergency strategy meetings. Number one is, we have a very active community, and they contact us. We get the information you get. Maybe a little bit more is passed on at the meetings. Maybe it makes a little bit more, maybe it makes a little more sense for us to be able to sit down, hear it, and be able to elaborate and pass it on a little bit more than saying, "Well, I talked to the chief and there's really nothing new." So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, I want to know what the council's appetite is to actually be part of the process, part of the plan, because I know.
I would certainly enjoy the help sitting there for the 12 or 14 hours. And if you, if that's what we, I spoke about at least having two briefings a day. Maybe that's the involvement that you need to be at, those two particular briefings per day. We found that that seems to be the, when we get the information from either PSNH or from staff or from that, that we need to get together, and then we need to make an action plan for the next 12 or 24 hours.
I mean, you know, honestly, Chief, I was out of the loop without even talking to the town manager. Not that I'm anyone special, but I am one counselor. I was out of the loop completely for two days. I had no communication. My phone was dead, my, everything was out. I had no communication. So I had no idea what was going on, didn't even know the shelter was open unless I drove by it.
Aren't you gonna have a problem, Dave? If we all meet, don't you have to post it prior to us meeting?
If it's not a chance meeting, that's correct.
All right, so how are you gonna do that?
My, my, my way that it's been done in the past.
Rephrase.
My way that it's been done in the past is, if you say one or two of you is the representative from the council to come to me as the emergency management director, and we'll have those staff meetings where we get the department heads, your two representatives, and we could pass on all that information based on that. That would be the easiest way to solve the issue.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Let's just rephrase.
Sure.
All right. Problem is, we're not getting information, okay? So we want information. We don't necessarily always be in one place to get it.
Right, right.
Okay? The information in this storm didn't come from the town. It came from a private website. All right, so we have a couple of questions we want to ask ourselves. Do we want to employ someone who is in the private sector to distribute information to the town? Because in today's day and age, people want information immediately. So that's one question. The second question is, is we need to get, you want, the council wants information from the fire chief. Fire chief has two mechanisms to do that. He can call each of us individually, and he can tell us. He can send us an email, or he can have a, you know, he can have a report dropped off at each one of our houses that says, "This is where we're at," twice a day. And that can't be that hard to do. There's only five of us, you know, and there is only 42 square miles. I'm sure they can find us, okay? Or we do nothing. So those are sort of our four options. We're not gonna revamp our website to put everything out there, because we don't have the money to do that. But he can stand on his head and run around for 24 hours, but if we don't have the information, we don't have anything.
So just to what you said, we're, the londonderrynewhampshire.org versus londonderrynewhampshire.net. We can't get our .org system to work like a blog is the same way. I mean, I could get my computer at my house to do a blog. I mean, it's not that hard.
We can do that, and we can have, we can hire people to stay over and staff that.
Right.
I guess what I'm looking for is, what is the community's expectation for this information? Because what our experience has been in the last five emergencies is that the first 24, 48 hours are critical. Roads, restoration of service with respect to power. Once the municipal portion of it is complete, the next one really is power restoration. And we're really at the mercy of public service to give us specific information. This last storm, they didn't do that. What they said was, is that we should have Londonderry up by 90% one day and 90% the next day. That's all they gave us. Couple of years ago, they said, they didn't say by circus, because they didn't want to explain circus, because of homeland security reason, they can totally understand that. They said, you know, Chase will be up Wednesday, Manth will be up Thursday. They didn't give us that information this storm.
So I think that's a mistake. That was a mistake.
We can do the blog. If you look at the blog, and the blogs are very helpful, and you're right, people like communication, but there was a lot of communication on blogs saying, "I saw a power truck on Chase Road," which is good information, but that doesn't tell me when the power's coming up on Chase Road. So I need to know what the expectations are regarding what the community wants from the local website. What we've done in the past as a matter of keeping the information streamlined and critical information, but also lack of resources, is that when we finally learned what the restoration dates were, as general as they were, those were up rather immediately. The frustration, frustrating part is, it's our goal during initial days of the storm is to do updates four times a day, but the information is not fresh. And especially at this storm where, like the chief said, after 14 hours, we're pretty much done. I mean, to give you an example, all the roads aren't open because Apollo's a tree across from Apollo. Well, that's right, the tree was across, but the road was open. There was one spot you can go around the other way to get to any residence. So as far as from an emergency viewpoint, the road was open as far from a traveling public viewpoint, but the perception is the road was still closed because there were lines down. So, you know, our frustration is, is not getting the information which is useful to the citizens as far as if you live in North Londonderry, it'll be up in a day and a half. If you live in South Londonderry, it'll be up in three days. That information wasn't forthcoming in the last storm. So it was frustrating the entire community.
I think that's what we, I'm sorry, I was just trying to respond to that, if you want to go.
Well, I don't know, maybe Yannis, how many streets are there in Londo, approximately?
Miles of road.
No, no, numbers, names of streets. How many specific, so as people can look and see, you know, alphabetically, how many streets are on.
Oh, God. I said, oh, God. From the 911.
Oh, God, you know, 180 miles of road, but you know, I don't, I don't know.
We get that from the 911 update that they've been doing.
Well, my point is, if there's, you know, 200 streets.
Yeah, okay, let's say for 200.
There's 200 streets. Why can't you list them by name, put them on the website, and have, you know, a dot next to it, closed?
We do. We did. We did every, twice a day.
And here's, here's the issue, is that, you know, within the first 12 hours of any event, people aren't looking at information because they're taking care of their own personal situations. By the time you get 12 months in, I get a list from these guys which roads are closed, and there's maybe a dozen or 15 tops at any of the last events. So it's not, it's not a significant number of roads that are closed, and that gets whittled down. What we're finding out is all that information.
But alternatively, the other part of that is, not closed, forget that, power. Who's got power?
It's an apple and oranges question. What PSNH needs is, is what roads have debris on the lines? What emergency management is supplying is, what roads can they get to in an emergency? Two different questions. That information of who had trees on lines wound up getting tweeted to a private website, who fed the information to PSNH, so they knew where to send the trucks.
That information was also submitted by the EOC from the town to public service regarding which roads were.
Every report that we, that came into, to either the police dispatcher, the fire dispatcher, or word of mouth to the DPW crews out in the streets, was all categorized, put in, put on a fax, and sent to what they require as the facts. Not only with that, I emailed the person that you talked to, Sean, afterwards, every single day with that infrastructure that was done. And every report of a limb on a, on a wire or everything that was given to us was reported by fax and email, and sometimes personnel talking to personnel.
Now, that lady said to me, "I went to the NH.org website to find out what roads were closed." I said, "Well, what about the information being sent to you?" "No, I'm going to your website to find it." Now, that's a breakdown on their side, then we need to change the way we communicate with them.
We were, the original representative contact, in other words, I contacted, when this first event started, I came in first thing in the morning on Sunday morning, and asked, you know, "Who are we talking to? What are we talking to?" And there was nobody assigned at that point until Sunday morning at about 8:00 a.m., when I got our personal representative assigned to us, who I think both of you spoke to at one time or another. She asked me to do two things. One is fax all the stuff in, email it to her, and tell her any specific things, you know, that we could, which we did.
So on Thursday, she told me, "This is the way they dispatched." I didn't say you did anything wrong.
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
This is what she said. That's how they wound up doing their job.
Exactly, because again, that's, that's long after we've already reported everything, but all the other things that they were looking at, and again, they supposedly, and I'll say this, we had asked them for a supervisor to come in town with a tree truck crew to take care of the roads that were, were closed. We didn't see them, that one truck and supervisor to clear the roads that had wires in them until, until late Monday afternoon. So that was an issue we had with them, because that was promised from the previous ice storm issue that we had. Because all we care about is getting the roads, you know, passable, and the wires out of the road so that we don't have a dangerous situation. The things that you're talking about, that restoration end of it, that they never communicated to us the need to us to report that to them.
But I think there's, Sean, I think there's, I think it was Claire afterwards, I don't remember which meeting it was, but I think it was Claire afterwards, that part of the SOP is to actually go onto these town websites. I think maybe, John, even you mentioned that, about Derry.
Yeah, after they said, yeah, Derry's website was more, was proactive like the private website was. We weren't. That's where they were, that's where they were going for information. I didn't say that we did anything wrong. They changed the way they responded. So in order to get better service, either we change the way we communicate, or we're gonna get the same thing next time.
We, we can do that. We've, we have a website that's, that, it's controlled because of all the other issues we have with, you know, making sure that the information that gets out there is correct and not somebody's opinion or blog or whatever, so it's much more controlled. Derry, on the other hand, did, they have that one section of their website where they can just put general comments, you know, even from people at that point. And I think that's where they went with that. And again, part of the thing is, Derry's really good, because they have the regional center right there, and they have a representative that sits right there. We didn't get one of those this time around, like we got, you know, three days later in the ice storm. And that's another issue with the PSNH. We're supposed to send a local representative to come and, you know, sit with us to make sure that it gets done, but they decided to do it differently this time and do it through regional.
So were you aware of what streets were without power? Was that information coming to you?
This one, this time? No. We did, we did, every other night, we did what we call the windshield survey. We send the police officers around and the fire guys, and we go up and down streets. However, since, since the ice storm, you get generators all over the place, which is what we did the very next day to make sure that generator safety was done. We, I can't tell you, I think we found over 100 generators improperly placed or installed through just doing the windshield survey. But we also did the power survey too. And we would report that every night to the PSNH.
So then it's fair to say that nobody in town had any centralized list of streets without power?
No.
So that's a change.
So I guess the question is, do we want to do that?
Well, we. Or have someone else do it.
Yeah. Public service would give us a list well into the storm of the streets they had listed as still being without power. And so the instructions given to us directly via phone from public service is, if anybody calls you and they're saying I'm still without power, make sure they call public service to make sure they have them.
So they're saying, now, they're telling us, they, they don't know, call them, and now that you're telling us, they're sending you a list.
See, now you're feeling my pain. But, you know.
In other words, I say, bull.
Exactly. I'll throw the S-word.
Obviously, things are incredibly hectic up there, we're trying to get everything done. I probably received, and of course, I mean, these emergencies, probably three dozen calls from residents who are either frustrated or just want to know what's going on. Each one of those, I do email our representative of public service, and she responds to me sometimes in the next four or five hours, saying, "I don't have this. Thank you," or "I have this on my list."
Here's a hybrid solution. When you get somebody that volunteers for alert, they watch Kathy's website, and they can send in the stuff to you, and then you can send it to the PSNH.
I have a little solution to this, and this is just, we're talking about going into the next digital generation.
All I know is that it's 2012, and we're really screwed up right now, because this is bull.
And part of it, and I will say, since, since, since 9/11, we have been trying to educate the public that they need to spend time, and for the next, for 72 hours, they need to be self-sufficient, period. Because government just can't handle any major disaster within 72 hours, including local governments. We do, we do a lot better job locally than the feds do, and they're aware of that.
This isn't a question of you guys.
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
Hey, the big hum is out there.
But, but, but the thing is, that we also haven't stepped up to the new generation. And I will say that personally, and part of it's a joint thing on your part to say, we need to get a Twitter account, we need to get a Facebook account, and we need to be able to limit the control of that, rather than let it go wild like it does out in the, in the general public. Because to tell you the truth, this last storm, I had a lot of angst, because people were posting things on Facebook accounts and websites. They were blogging things that weren't even true. And that puts a lot of angst on, you know, Dave as the town manager, me as the emergency manager, and the staff that's out there in the streets. Because, you know, they were saying that, you know, and I'll go back to the pet thing, that, "Oh, it's up on the website that it's a pet-friendly shelter." When you go to the state EOC website, which I have control over, and it's, specifically, that box is not checked.
But WZID was announcing it on the hour, and I called them personally.
And so did I.
And told them, "No."
And, and so did I, but you know where they got that from? They got it from locally. They did not go to the state site to make sure that that was correct. And again, so these are the types of things that happen particularly, but I think we need to go in that direction. I think we need to go to the digital age, and we need to, but we need to have people input that. We have the NICSIL system. We've had it, we've advertised it, we've, we've done it. And yet, we, we don't have a large degree of people doing it. The problem, people that we don't get a hold of is the elderly or the people that aren't digitally, you know, savvy.
Dave, the concern that I have about what we're talking about is, I consider myself a policymaker, and very much a part-time policymaker. So for, if we're thinking about entering into systems that are gonna put me in the, in the loop, in a decision loop, then I worry that we may make things worse, not better. Because, you know, you might send a message to me, or to some of us, that require us to make a decision or whatever, and I may not get that, I may not read my email for 10, 12 hours, and all of a sudden, you're waiting. You're waiting for a politician to swing a gavel, to say, "Do this, don't do that." And we might end up slowing things down or making things worse. So my thought is that we've got to put whatever policy in place we want to implement. And then when a crisis happens, we step back and get out of the way and let the professionals execute that policy. I mean, we want to be probably more in an information loop, but not in a decision loop.
That's 100% agreed.
And so one of the other things, let's switch gears for a minute, you say, what do we want? One of the things I might propose is that we accumulate some information. And I understand this would be static and would need to be updated, but some information about, that people could volunteer to come forward and say, "Hey, I'm, I'm a crisis. I have a crisis in my life. I have a need for oxygen. I have a need for medication that needs refrigeration. I have..." Whatever my situation is, and then we accumulate that list so that in an emergency situation.
We do have a list.
We need better advertise it, but, but we have this list so that when PS, we can communicate to PSNH, say, "Listen, when you look at your priority of repower, keep these people on your list, because they're in crisis." Or our local folks, like yourself, can periodically check on these folks. Are they in trouble, or do they need something? So, do they need some assistance with a generator or whatever? So it sounds like you've, you know, you've already addressed that to some degree, but I don't know how well advertised that is, that people can come forward and volunteer and say, "Can you put my name on the list?"
We go to all the elderly, we go all 55 communities. I've had visits with all of them. But again, part of it is, it's just like the NICSIL system. You need to belong to it. We can't, you know, we can't formally sign you up. I'd like to say to every cellphone user in, in, in Londonderry, you know, "Let me, you know, utilize you."
But what about a periodic press release that we could put in, into some of the local blogs or into our website or into the local newspapers to say, you know, "If you have, if you find yourself in this situation, here's what you can do about it, and here's who to call at Town Hall to put your name on a list in your crisis."
what your crisis is.
My, my suggestion is, and I, I don't know if this can be done, but every, and I say, I'll say this with a thing, everybody gets a tax bill. Let me send it, let me send it with the tax bill.
Good idea.
You know, and I know PSNH has sent it out with all their electric bills, the, the generator safety and the thing, that gets, that got sent out early this year because we, we as emergency managers and the state fire marshal, you know, put that out to them to, to make sure that it gets done. I mean, we even, we even got the local Home Depot to put the, that regulation stuck on every generator box. I mean, those, those are the types of things, but.
The school district has huge amounts of email contact with, with people now.
Again, part of it is, we don't, we're not allowed to use it.
Why not?
We couldn't use it.
Why can't we use it?
Maybe that's part of the plan.
You can ask people.
Why, why, why can't we ask the school department to send an email out and ask them if we can contact them in an emergency situation?
I'll only tell you that, that because of the privacy issues, that we can't do that.
You can waive your right to be convicted of murder. All you gotta do is send them a piece of paper and ask them to waive it. You know, you can go plead guilty to murder if you want, so you can do this if you just do it the right way.
There's gotta be a legal way in which we can say to the superintendent, we have an emergency situation in town, will you please send this information? We're not doing anything.
Part of the emergency management plan. This question actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. This question actually goes to Dave. Dave, as far as the emergency management headquarters, can we, and I don't know if we're ready to talk about this yet, but can we enhance it to the point where when we have a significant issue the way we've had over the past two thousand and eight ice storm and, and this past October, where we can actually have somebody manning the emergency head, I mean, if we talk about it and, and designate somebody to actually man, man it to the point where they have certain things that they would do? Because if you remember a while back, we were talking about the shelter possibly having a TV screen with, with updates coming in and maybe we possibly use the GIS system to update that as far as power, et cetera, and phone calls, emergency, just some, somebody that's gonna be manning that. So that's where the central location is. I understand that, Chief, you are the kind of central person, but you can't be there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so.
The EOC is either at the police station.
Okay.
Or at the fire station. Both a man twenty-four seven.
Okay.
Somebody is available. GIS is a great idea, okay? The information roadblock is getting information from public service.
Okay.
That's the roadblock we have. And I'm not criticizing them, that's just a fact of life is that I love to tell people what public service has in their records as who's out and who's not out, but we can't publicize that if we don't receive the information.
But two years ago, we got it, so maybe we just talked to them about, maybe we have the.
The outage map on their, on their internet site, that's all they're willing to share. That's how I knew the fifteen hundred guys were there.
But before you said they did it, right?
They did it, they did it in the ice storm. Three days in, they started giving us specific information, after which we publicize immediately on the website. We also shared it out to the private websites, this is what we received, we give it, we give it to everybody. There's two ways we really distribute information. One is generally on the website and then I've got an email grouping, which is not a lot of public, it's probably about a half dozen public on it, is, it's called agenda distribution. So when I send out any kind of information, council gets a planning board, school board members, budget committee, and there's probably a dozen citizens who are interested in that. The other thing is that I'm gonna publicize this more is on our website, there's a feature there, which essentially says, is that if you're a private citizen, you can receive as much or as little information regarding minutes, notifications, anything you want. And when that goes to IT, they classify it, boom, it goes out to the public. And I think the largest group we have, I don't know which classification, there's probably about a hundred residents on that. So if residents will make themselves available to that, it'll be, allow us to get information out to people a lot quicker.
You, you said something about EOC being at the police or the fire. I guess what I'm envisioning is something a little bit step up from there. I'm talking about somebody that's, and maybe we, we don't need to duplicate it, maybe that's, that's actually gonna, would be an additional thing that we ask the dispatcher to do, I don't know, in each one of the areas, assign it, but like NICSIL, NICSIE, NICSIL?
Yep.
I don't even know how to say it, but I have it on my phone.
Yeah.
I don't recall any of those going out. I recall, I get, I did get an email from the school saying that when the buses were gonna start. So, you know, what I'm saying is that somebody will, will, will have the permissions already done, you know, we're gonna go through it with the school, we're gonna go through it with the NICSIL system and that all these things are kind of managed through this one focal, one person, including, hopefully at some point we'll get PSNH to cooperate a little bit more with, with those streets and can be able to have updates running. But I, I guess one point of, I mean, when I went to the, when I went out to the, to the gyms, they were like, where do we really go? I mean, what, what do we get from information? How do we get it? And I don't really even know that we have this EOC person somewhere that we can go to talk to. So unless I was sleeping through one of those meetings or something, I mean, it's not public knowledge that, and, and where that is and where that person is should be constantly always the same in the, in the, in my suggestion, in the shelter or somewhere we designate so that people could come, we know where to get that information, we know where the updates are gonna be.
But it can't be one person if it's gonna be twenty-four seven.
A position or something, whatever we designate it.
I, I think I understand what you're, what you're getting at, is a central collection point, essential distribution point for what you're talking about.
But, but more so as a person, like to council.
Absolutely.
It wouldn't be you, but it would be, you would tag team one of your captains and one of your captains would tag team one of the police sergeants or something.
Exactly.
Then it goes, you know, and, and yeah, we, we'd have to budget the overtime for that and I know we're going through budgets right now and we wouldn't want to, you know, even talk about those things, but we have to. I mean, we're, we need this information, people need this information. As far as the elderly, the other, the other part of the elderly, and I, I don't want to take up so much of time, but part of the elderly is that it's, you know, maybe block captains, we're talking about block captains, we're talking about information about trees down. Like I didn't realize that you had Yanis, a, a list of all the, the streets that were blocked and all the, I, I didn't realize that and you say it's, it was on the website.
On every day, Dave was posted twice a day.
But what I was gonna, but without, and again, we couldn't get on the website, but what, what I was gonna, what I was gonna suggest was having maybe some people like